Call a meeting to order, the Town and Council Board of Selectment, Monday, August 29th, 2016. The Board has just returned from an executive session, we're now in open session, our first order of business, invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have any proclamations, announcements? Mr. Patterson?
Yes, two announcements. First of all, there's an effort to try to help the T-Ticket students and teachers who are suddenly being faced with being relocated to other schools where their classes and their education program, and so, there's a group that's actually organized a "Fill a Bus" campaign. It's, the bus is going to be located at the school administration building this Wednesday, August 31st, and will be available all day for contributions such as school supplies to be just simply handed over as a contribution. And as I said, it's both teachers and students who cannot go and get their materials out of the school for use in their alternate building, and I was going to report on this later, but they, students would have been a T-Ticket or being housed in classrooms both at Morse Pond and also at East Falmouth. So, they're dislocated, and they're dislocated from their supplies, so this is an effort to try to supplement what they would have had if they could have occupied that building normally. My second announcement is to let everybody know that the Rotary Antique and Craft Show is this Saturday and Sunday, and it's a school-related benefit. All the proceeds from this show go to scholarships for Falmouth students and also to the service center. So this is purely fundraising for charitable purposes, and it's basically 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM this Saturday and Sunday. It's at Marina Park, so when you come and it's a donation to enter the gate, there'll be more than 60 vendors of crafts and antiques and art there on the green there by the band shelf. So it's a great fundraising opportunity, I think it's the 16th time that they've done this, but it's purely for raising funds for a charitable purpose.
Any other announcements? Any public comment? If you'd like to speak on something that's not on our agenda, please limit your comment to two minutes. Mr. Dufresne?
My comment, Amy Dufresne, Precinct 2, and a reasonably longtime participant in town government. One of my, one of my dissatisfactiones tonight is this agenda that I'm holding in my hand. Two agenda items, which are very, very important to the general public. One of them is the discussion of the purchase of a piece of property for which there's been little or no public discussion, for a substantial sum, and we're supposed to have that ready for, I believe, early September. The last one is the discussion of a consolidation of various departments, one of which is the Veteran Services. I've been involved with Veteran Services for about 35 years, and I'm not going to speak for the veterans tonight because Mr. Mustafa is here, me, I'm going home. You put these two items at the very last part of this agenda. Now, these are very, very important issues to a number of people who volunteer their services to, I think, help the Board of Selectmen, because the majority of them are your appointees. They're your appointees, and now we're going to consolidate them and say, who's in charge? Now, I don't know what the purpose is, but I will give one comment on Veteran Services, they do not belong conglomerated into any other function other than providing the services of Chapter 115, as adopted by the Town of Falmouth in 1954.
Okay, Mr. Dufresne, if you want to talk about the creation of the agenda, we can listen to that.
Speak up, please.
To discuss the actual issue is later on in our agenda. I understand your original comment was the timing of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you allowing me to stand up here on the comment period, because I think you've done a doing, a disservice to a lot of citizens of the Town of Falmouth that would like to sit in on a discussion of those two agenda items, and they're not here, number one, because of the late hour, or the fact that there was not enough pre-notification.
Okay, I understand.
Thank you very much for allowing me to stand here.
Thank you. Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6, candidate for seat on the Board of Selectmen. Actually, my comment was basically the same as Mr. Dufresne's, I've been kind of paying attention to this for quite some time. It seems that instead of a spirit of openness and transparency, the agendas have been this way, and this was, tonight was finally what stirred it and made me come forward. There's a lot of people in this, in this town that are older, I mean, by the time some of these things get addressed, they're asleep or want to be asleep. I mean, there's people that want to pay attention, but they have other things. If you could just turn the agendas upside down, so to speak, I think it would do the people in this community a great service, and all the nuts and bolts of regular things could be done at the end, and, you know, people could basically watch the selectmen for an hour and, and get the important stuff and not have to suffer through the little things first. Thanks a lot.
For those looking at home wanting to come in, I expect we'll be at these big items by 7:30 tonight. Minutes? We have the Public Session of August 15th.
I move approval not to release.
Oh, they're sorry, the Executive Session?
Executive Session. Second.
Motion to approve and not release, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. And then we have the Public Session of August 15th.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion, second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I may just insert one thing on page three, halfway down the page where it's under item number four, under Business. It says that Mr. Patterson made the following comment, that has to do with the Lawrence Window Project is going well and will not interrupt the education program, front windows are in, they are changing the blinds and replacing the deteriorated wooden gutters, not all the wooden gutters. So I just wanted to make sure that it was limited to just those gutters where they've got plants growing out of them and they rot. It's a relatively small fraction of the overall gutters, so that was the only correction I wanted.
Motion to approve with that change. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. All right, under licenses, we have a new lodging house license for the Frederick William House, 594 Palmer Avenue. Do we have anyone for the applicant here? I did have a question, on the main application, it says number of rooms, main house five and cottage two, and every other document only talks, is very specific, that there are only five rooms that are going to be part of this application. The Board of Appeals' decision, everything else, never talks about the cottage, and so I don't think the cottage can be included in the application.
That's fine.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions, Mr. Patterson?
Say the question.
I, I do, and that's whether the Health Department has brought in to inspect this particular new room that's being created, and same thing with the fire safety regulations.
We have had meetings with them, and it's, it's their call at this point, so we're open to whenever they'd like to inspect.
I see.
The last time it was inspected was in, I think it was three years ago, when Aladio had, had given occupancy for the, a connection that was done, so fire was done at that time, and I, I think that the Board of Health was involved at that time, but I'm not sure because Aladio did it.
My concern is that this is a separate living unit now, and there may be additional requirements, but you.
On that point, are you planning on serving a full breakfast?
No, not at this time.
What are you planning on serving?
It's just continental, all prepackaged.
All right, so the question would be just to ask the Health Department if that's the case, do I need an inspection?
Correct, yes, so we won't be cooking at this time.
Great, because they would otherwise inspect the kitchen, and you'd need, you know, certified food, serve pro person and all of that.
Correct, yes.
Any questions?
I move approval contingent upon meeting the Health Department's fire safety requirements.
For five, right?
For five rooms.
For five rooms, yes.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Actually, we'll just see if there's anyone who'd like to speak on behalf of this application or in opposition to this application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it.
Thanks, guys, good luck.
Thank you, good luck. Next is the application for a change of manager for the Cape Club. Do we have one from the Cape Club?
There you go.
Yep.
Are you recording video or audio? For audio, you just need to let us know, for video, you need to have our permission to do so.
So from this point forward, we would give permission, and also anyone else you're recording would have to.
So I'm probably going to be a regular, so you've done this twice before, do I have to ask every time?
Yes, stay low.
Sure, got you, thank you.
So, motion to allow video?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
I'm John Noblyn, this is Amy Milano, I'm the new general manager, and Amy's our day-to-day operations manager, so we're here for the transfer of the license to the Cape Club.
Do you have any questions?
And John, you live in Rainham?
Yes, I do.
And you understand, as the manager of all alcohol license, you're still the one responsible for, or you're designated?
I do.
Other questions for the manager?
Well, I just had a question on the application, because it looks like Mr. Noblyn is the responsible for everything, the treasurer, the chair, and what, and that's not typical. We usually have other officers that are overseeing the operation, so I was curious.
We have a good staff, it's Amy, my key person here, and we have a full staff of managers in account, so I, I do take on a lot of responsibility, but I'm confident we have the people to do it. We've done a lot of work there, I mean, I'm sure you've witnessed what we've done there, so it's made you.
Any questions?
I have one.
Yeah.
What other similar establishments have you run?
Mostly construction companies, that's what I do for a living, I've been doing it for 50 years, so we, property management too, we own commercial and residential buildings. This is our first venture into this type of operation, myself. We hope to do some housing there too, which is what, what I do.
Thank you.
I do want to follow up, because obviously alcohol is being served at this facility, a big concern of ours is the proper management of the serving of all alcohol, and since you don't come out of this business, have you been trained, and are you tip-certified?
I am not tip-certified.
I am, and all of our servers and bartenders that serve alcohol are.
Okay, so.
All of the staff is.
My question to Mr. Noblyn is, are you going to recognize when maybe things aren't being done properly?
I feel confident that I can do that. I don't drink for when things are, that might help me.
Well, I would recommend that you do a little research on your own, at least, so that you're aware of what the practices should be.
I have been involved in the ownership of a couple of other restaurants too, in the past, so.
Thank you.
And just to be aware, the questions we're asking really are, the responsibilities that the ABCC puts on the manager are quite stringent, and I think your employees are aware of it, but for you all to be, that it's actually your name and your responsibility that will be, you'll be the one we'll be coming back to say, hey, you're supposed to know this, and for you to come back and say, oh, I didn't know that, won't go over well.
No, I understand that.
Great, great, thank you.
Could I just ask you just a quick follow-up question of Ms. McGrath?
Milano.
Milano. Oh, I'm sorry, Milano.
That's okay.
So can, you have worked in the, the food and beverage industry?
Yes, I have. Yes, this is my sixth year at the property, I worked at the property with the previous owner, when the new owner came on, I stayed on, and I also worked at the Golf Club of Cape Cod for four years there before, and I started waitressing at 15, so I've been in the industry for a long time.
I'm going to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it.
Congrats.
Next is the application for change of manager for the Casino Restaurant, L.C. doing business with Casino FX. Mr. Amen?
Good evening, I'm Bob Amen, Falmouth attorney, and I'm with Lisa McGrath, and she is the proposed new general manager of the Casino Warf FX Restaurant in the Heights. She's not new to the restaurant, she's been the assistant manager for several years, and she's been employed at the restaurant, starting as a bartender now for eight years, and before that, she was a bartender and filled in as food and beverage manager at the recreational facility at the, at the National Guard Base. She is tip-certified, also crowd control certified, I think she's, knows just what she's getting into, she told me she knows the restaurant inside and out, and so I'm sure she's an appropriate manager and holder of the license.
And also note that you're from, you're living in Forest Hill right now, which is not too far away from Falmouth, but you still are, as the manager, the one responsible to be on the grounds, or you're designated.
Correct, it takes me about 20 to 25 minutes to get there.
Right, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. McGrath?
Going to make a motion to approve, Ms. McGrath?
Second. Motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. All right, under administrative orders, please let me know if you want to hold any of these. Item A is to accept an anonymous donation in the amount of $1,200 to the beach donation account.
I'll hold that one.
Okay. Item B is to authorize a town to request to accept $75,000 from the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative, to support three years of baseline monitoring by the UMS Dartmouth School for Marine Science and Technology. Item C is to vote to declare surplus property at Davis Road and Marshview Road in East Falmouth. Item D is to authorize the town manager to collaborate with Big Fix Event with the Housing Assistance Corp. for the year 2017. Item E is to vote to extend the deed restriction for 850 West Falmouth Highway.
Hold.
Item F is to sign a license agreement to allow public works to enter upon private property at 26 Takame Way in Wacoit, to perform work to reconstruct the herring pond that runs between Born Pond and Vlog Pond. And item G is a declaration of the emergency per Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 31, for the abatement of asbestos at T-Ticket Elementary School, to allow them to spend more money than we have right now in the house.
I'll hold that.
Okay. So if items A, E, and G held, and items B, C, D, and F were not, entertain a motion to approve B, C, D, and F?
So moved.
Motion. Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. A.
Thank you, Laura.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the donor of this $1,200 given to our, for the betterment of our beaches. It's an anonymous person, and we just really appreciate it, because it's obviously an extremely important resource in town, and one that's been very well-used this summer. That's the only, so I move approval of that donation, of receiving that donation.
Second.
Motion, second, to accept the donation of $1,200 to beach donation account, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, the ayes have it. Next item is to vote to extend the deed restriction for 850 West Falmouth Highway. Ms. Moran, you asked to hold this one?
Sure, is anyone here on that item?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tim Burke, and I'm here on behalf of Scott Moore, who is the manager of a unit at this condominium trust. I can tell you he'd rather be here tonight himself, however, I learned this morning that he broke his leg in three places. Just so you know, I've never appeared before at Board of Selectmen before.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt for one minute, I'm just in hearing the name of the individual, I actually have represented him in connection with this particular piece of property, so just going to recuse.
Mr. Moore opposes the extension of the deed restriction. Let me give you a little background of how this all came about. Mr. Moore owns a unit there which is over 5,000 square feet of livable space. He has proposed before the ZBA to allow the property to be split into two different units, which would make it A, more affordable, and B, more economically viable. He bought the property, like all owners who buy these type of properties, with the belief that after 30 years, the deed restriction would lapse. However, at the last minute, the town, excuse me, the, the board, I can't think of the name, and I apologize for that, there is some movement to extend this restriction, and how does anybody get ahead with that? If the town gets a reputation for extending restrictions, no one's going to build, and it's very, it's difficult, and these are Marina, I've looked into this in another matter, it's difficult in this arena to get properties built. The numbers often don't work for people. So respectfully ask that you consider quite seriously denying the request to extend the deed restriction, and thank you.
I'd like to also hear from Ms. Connolly.
Good evening, I'm Annie Connolly, I'm the executive director of the Falmouth Housing Trust. We sent a letter to the zoning Board of Appeals as a, as a courtesy, really, to remind them of the deed restriction which was set to lapse this fall. We copied the Board of Selectmen, I believe the letter was sent in May. Essentially, our position is, and we're, we're co-holders of the deed restriction with the town, I'm not really sure the proper verbiage, we're open to extending the deed restriction. I believe at the time, the deed restriction was put in place because of the density on the parcel during its development, it was, the, it was originally granted a comprehensive permit, then that was retracted, then there was a special permit, there's been, just so you know, when I went up to the Zoning Board of Appeals to do my due diligence, there were, this meant, the file was this big, it's, it was a lot of reading. So just, I'll cut to the quick, real quick, I, the, the Falmouth Housing Trust Board of Directors, you know, in keeping with our mission, certainly, we don't want to hinder anybody's ability to make a living, however, it's our position that that is an already densely settled development. There is a water quality issue in West Falmouth, certainly, Ms. Moran knows that, we're, we used to be neighbors. And lastly, you know, and I communicated this to Jeff Nickerson, who was representing the owner at the time, when he reached out to us, I, I think if the, if the second unit was going to be deed restricted as affordable, that would be in keeping with the Falmouth Housing Trust mission, and that would, I believe, technically be the first deed restricted property in West Falmouth, we would have been open to a conversation. That's not the case, my understanding is that both units will be market units, and that's really up to somebody's personal gain, so the public good, our opinion, isn't, isn't served with this, but however, we defer to the Board of Selectmen.
That's only how I read the application, it kept talking about making the units more affordable, as opposed to what I would actually term being affordable units.
Right, as, as counsel said, it would be a better profit, or to the benefit of the new owner.
Well, I would say that, in this case, you know, it's buyer beware, and it was pretty obvious that this restriction could be extended, and the person should have realized that they were taking that risk on. I mean, our responsibility really is, and we have it in our strategic plan, but even the local comprehensive plan of our planning board, basically is trying to expand affordable housing, so really, we think it's, I feel it's in the best interest of the town, to keep this restricted, and I would be in favor of extending this deed restriction for another 20 years.
Any other comments? entertain a motion?
Is that a motion?
I'll move that we extend that deed restriction for 20 years.
I understand the substantial, a substantial cost.
I'm sorry, if you have a question, I asked if there are comments, you can come to the, to the podium and ask a question.
I'll finish my motion for 850 West Falmouth Highway.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item G, Declaration of Emergency per Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one, for asbestos at T-Ticket Elementary School. Mr. Patterson, did you want to discuss this?
Yes, I wanted to just mention that we were all at the school committee meeting on Tuesday, and then I know that our town manager, Julian Susso, and I were at the parent meeting on Friday, and I just wanted to reassure all those parents that might not have attended or listened to it on FCTV that the school committee is taking, and the school department, are taking the safety and education of children very seriously. And the unfortunate thing is, an accident has occurred, and asbestos fibers have been released, and so now we have to take those measures that are appropriate to protect children and also to assure that they have an effective education. So the accommodation has been announced, and the classes at T-Ticket will be split up, and essentially, third and fourth graders are gonna be going to Morse Pond. They're accommodating them by, you know, basically displacing science rooms and certain special subject rooms that they had set aside, and putting classrooms in there, both on the second and first floor of that building, and also then at East Falmouth Elementary, they've managed to get a couple of classrooms freed up, and they're gonna double up classes at the kindergarten, pre-K, and first grade and second grade levels, and put two classes in a classroom with full teachers. So there'll be two teachers in there with those doubled up classrooms, plus the aides that would normally be working with them. So there's been conscientious effort made by both the school committee and by the school department to make sure that there's a minimal impact on the children's safety and their educational quality. This is predicted to be about a two-week period for them to actually go through and do the asbestos remediation, which requires special contractors who know how to handle this kind of a risk environment. So I just wanted to make sure that people realize that this problem is being taken very seriously. Unfortunately, it's not gonna go, come free, and we need to, I guess at this point, declare this as an emergency situation for the sake of state law, and so I'm gonna move that we declare T-Ticket Elementary School an emergency situation.
We will then end up having an article in town meeting, an November town meeting, to be able to fund, put the necessary funds into this year's fiscal budget to cover that emergency. Ms. Moran?
Can I just add that, first of all, I'll second the motion, but it's sort of an administrative language that we're approving here. I really would encourage everyone to watch the school committee and the superintendent Nancy Taylor's description of the issue. First of all, I think you'll find that she said that there, you know, there really weren't any concerns for children in terms of being present when there was the issue that came up regarding asbestos. It did happen when the, during the summer break, when there weren't any children, and it was, you know, essentially a requirement of state law that there be further remediation, but that the release and the numbers were, you know, really particularly contained. So I just wouldn't want the fact that we're using the declaration of emergency, which we're required to do under general laws, to alarm anyone in particular or to think that there's a change in the situation. And I also, I don't, you know, I didn't hear that it was a two-week time period, but I certainly...
Two months.
Two months. Okay. So the, you know, I'm sure that Dr. Taylor will continue to give, you know, apprise the students and the public with, you know, sort of status of how it's going and exactly when you can make plans. And then I just also want to compliment the school committee, the school department, all the teachers, parents, and kids for really, you know, just really being strong and going with this necessary situation. Thank you.
Just a quick, I believe, and I hope someone will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that at East Falmouth, it's gonna be pre-K first and second, and then third, fourth, and fifth will be at the Morse Pond School.
Thank you.
Phil's saying...
Third and fourth are there anyway.
The second, third, and fourth at Morse Pond?
I meant, excuse me, at Mullen Hall.
No, no.
No. I'm totally, we're all, totally...
You wanna switch seats?
No. At any rate, and I was there for both meetings, so that shows the kind of memory that I have. But... But the, Dr. Taylor, and I certainly think, you know, the piece that I found really powerful when I was at the meeting this week was just that, the response from parents. You know, the community coming together to stuff a bus, asking what they could do and how they could help the faculty, how they could help the town and support the children, and that's really what Falmouth is all about. So this is certainly a challenge. It's not a small one, but I think that we are really, you know, we can have the confidence that it'll be met and dealt with appropriately, and certainly, the town coming together is what we hope to continue for the next couple of months, wherever your children are. Dr. Taylor knows.
We have a motion and second to declare emergency.
Another comment. As far as mixing up the details, please go to the town, to the school's website to get the straight information, because we're not deeply involved in it, so we don't have all those figures, you know, memorized and at the tip of our tongue. So please, make sure you consult the school's website. They'll have all the information about busing of children and the kinds of combinations that are gonna be made at each class level, and where the students are gonna be taught for the foreseeable future until we get this under control. And it will get under control. It's not, and the fact that this is being declared an emergency is really a requirement of law so that we can appropriate the funding that's needed to pay for the contractor to come in and do the remediation.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Next is a special event. This is the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association Radio Demo at Peg Moonin Park on Saturday, September 24, 2016. Mr. Putnam, would you like to, are you here to describe this event for us? Give a little plug to what's gonna happen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent Putnam, current president of the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association. We are actually, this year, celebrating our eighty-fifth anniversary, and that's what this is all about. We're gonna throw a little party, a little demonstration of what we do, and it's open to the public, obviously. We wanted to do it in a location that is visible and well-traversed, so hopefully you'll give your stamp of approval to this request.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Further discussion? Anyone in the public? All those in favor?
Yeah, just a comment to say that clubs like this one are really an emergency backup. When everything shuts down in the town, frequently, it's the amateur radio clubs that actually serve as those emergency communication networks that alert families, that their families are okay, or they need help, or whatever. So we really appreciate that backup function that is served by your club.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
The ayes have it. Next item on our agenda is the Water and Wastewater Monthly Report. Is Mr. Jack in the hall? If not, we can move on to the next item of business. We have a application for a sign variance. This is from the John Wesley United Methodist Church with their promotional signs.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have it. Next is an application for a sign variance for the T Room, 196 Crystal Spring Avenue.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Well, I just appreciated the design reviews committees' work in looking at this and looking for alternative, but really, they're asking for an exception, and for good reason. There really isn't a logical place to put a sign on this particular facility, so I'm very comfortable with their recommendation.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. The next item we're gonna take out of order, we had item five, which is a discussion on potential purchase of Kuna Messin Inn. And item four is their hearing from the architect of potential senior center sites. And an announcement I'd like to make on the potential purchase of the Kuna Messin Inn is as follows. The board of selectmen has decided not to pursue further negotiations for the purchase of the Kuna Messin Inn. After considering all the information that we have at hand, we have determined it is not in the best interest of the town to go forward with the Kuna Messin Inn as an option for the senior center. The question will remain on the ballot, but it is likely that the Department of Revenue would declare the question invalid due to the lack of a dollar figure being associated with that question, even if it did pass.
Just Phil here?
Well, we have Mr. Jack on the Water and Wastewater. I guess actually, I would like to see if there are any questions on the announcement of the Kuna Messin Inn. Happy to answer them if there's something that we can do so, but just try and get as much information out of there as I can. If you could come to the podium, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Philip Pofonso, Precinct Nine. The decision to not purchase the Kuna Messin Inn, it's kind of a shocker, so I'm kind of on the fly here, but I'm imagining price was the issue?
Yep.
Was there an appraisal? Are we off, like, fifty grand? Are we...
It was a negotiation that was confidential. I don't think that it is appropriate to disclose the exact parameters of that negotiation.
Was the appraisal paid for by Mr. Zammer, or was that paid for by the town of Falmouth?
Paid for by the town of Falmouth.
So then, I should be able to receive a copy of that appraisal?
It is a public document.
And where would I receive that appraisal?
You can check in the town manager's office.
And that will be available tomorrow?
I don't think it'll be available tomorrow. I think on Wednesday, it'll be the earliest it will be available.
Okay. The, wow. All right. So I guess I wanna finish off, keep it brief. Thank you. This could've gone in sort of a horrible direction. I appreciate you guys considering price and not just sending it off to the voters, no matter what the price tag was at, you know, for my children coming up, one who's sitting in the back row there. Thank you. It means a lot. Our children, our community, it's, this was a very big problem for a lot of people, myself included. So thank you for taking the time to do the due diligence and sort of doing the research. I'm sure it wasn't easy. With our other selectmen stepping down, that added fifteen thousand dollar price tag to the selection, right? Excuse me. Yes?
Yeah.
So now with this question on the ballot, does this also add additional funds?
No.
So the ink to go on the ballot, I'm assuming that was, no, no, I'm being dead serious. I'm not joking one bit. The twenty thousand dollar price tag, I'm assuming, is for the ink to go on the ballots, for all the ballots. So what does that price...
It's a whole separate ballot for the selectmen's election. It is a entire...
It's a separate piece of paper?
Separate piece of paper.
Okay. So the Kuna Messin would've shown up on...
One only reason we did the ballot on the Kuna Messin is because we had a ballot, a election in process already.
Okay.
I don't think the board of selectmen would've put in a ballot question in the September eighth if this election weren't already occurring. The fact that it was already occurring for the cost, and I would say in the neighborhood of three dollars for the ink for those ballots, we thought that was worth the price.
Sure. Okay. I was confused. I didn't know there was a separate actual ticket for selectmen. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
I will also comment that the board of selectmen spent a lot of time, when we heard this offer, we felt it was the most appropriate thing to pursue it, and to pursue it the best we could, as far as we could. And when we came to this determination, we felt it was in the interest of the town to not go forward any further. Any other questions on this issue? Yes, sir?
My name is Richard Bowen, and not speaking for the committee on this, but we need to have, in this town, some kind of comprehensive plan that looks ahead. In other words, as, if you read the article by Bob Leary in the Enterprise, he stated that all the wants that we look forward to, we have no idea where they're gonna be put. If you don't know where to put them, every time we bring up one thing, we have to point a committee to look for it. Why not, let's get together like Mashby did and put a place, put in place, a piece of land that's big enough to fit the needs in the future?
I certainly appreciate the articles put forward. I appreciate that sentiment. My personal feeling is, the senior center has been on the back burner, slowly moving to the front burner, and we cannot take any more time on that one to figure into a bigger piece of work. We need to do the senior center as a sole item now, and not, I love the idea of trying to plan more and make it fit in a bigger piece, but I personally feel that's something we need to go forward with. And we will be getting back to the senior center discussion, but thank you for the questions on the Kuna Messin, just to make sure people understood where we were heading. All right. We now have a report from Mr. Jack on the Water and Wastewater monthly report.
I still don't think he's here.
I saw him come in the door.
Is he?
I saw him too.
I think we're really far.
He is here. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Annie.
Mr. Jack?
Good evening. Thank you. Summer is almost officially over, which hopefully some things will get back to normal. We still have construction going on in the streets. So tonight's project bill reviews are gonna be Little Pond's service area first, followed by Long Pond, and good news and bad news is there's no video. So depending on how you take that, it's good news or bad news. So the original construction contract for Little Pond was 20.4 million. The adjusted value is 21.6. It says that as of June, it was 67% completed, but we are at the end of August, so they're actually closer to 80% at this point. The final completion is not supposed to be until June next year, so final paving on many of the roads will be occurring in the spring, but the actual construction in the roads should be over this November, so that's good news. Potential change orders, 300,000, and most of that would be potential utility conflicts and paving issues, but we're not really expecting that. That's just an estimated value of what it could be. There'll be a number of credits that are gonna be associated with the contract after November for unused pavement items that we did, so that'll offset some of that. So 21.64 million is the current value, and that's the green line. The dark blue line was the original budget value, and 14.5 million is what was actually paid out so far. That's a little bit different than the value that you have on your report, only because the actual payment reflects a reduction of the contingency amount that we hold on them and reserve. So where we are, they're continuing to do all of the mains and laterals in the Maravista area. Falmouth Heights is complete. The trunk main, which was north of Randolph, going all the way up through Maravista, Maravista Extension is complete. There's a piece of Maravista which veers off to 28 that still needs to be done. The section up by the Fish Market where it goes south on Maravista has already been completed, but the section on the southern portion to connect into Maravista still has to be completed. So that's going to be during the month of September. During that month as well, to connect each of the respective side streets into the Maravista main will require a disruption on Maravista, but not as bad as what was typically going on when we had the mainline construction. So one or two days a week, they may have to shut down and/or reduce traffic flow on Maravista to accommodate... Maravista to accommodate that. Final paving on Route twenty eight from Alphonse or the School Administration Building down to the Admiralty, which is about where the limit of the work is for the state intersection project, that paving, final paving, full width, curb to curb with a mill and overlay is going to be middle September, probably around September eighteenth. So, that section at least will be done. The other section going west of that, where we had disruptions on the west side of the intersection, the gas main installation will be going on after Labor Day on the northbound lane of twenty eight from about where the Mexican restaurant is. That's where they left off in the spring, and they're going down to Ny Road. So, it shouldn't take them too long, but I do not have the actual timeframe for them yet, but that will occur sometime after Labor Day. There is a benefit to the town on that. The state road ends at Friendly's, so we will be doing, under our contract, normally full width, curb to curb, from the west side of the intersection down to Friendly's. Thereafter that, down to Scranton Avenue, where we had sewer disruption as well, would have been a trench repair. Because of the gas main going in, they will be doing a full width from Scranton down to Ny. So, that's a...or they'll be doing it from Friendly's down to Scranton, full width. So, a considerable amount of the road will be redone. The lift stations are just about ready to go. One of them's still waiting for power. They're doing the final preps now, but all the mechanical and electrical and landscaping and painting and sealing has all been completed. This was just some of the gravity installations that were going on. So, you can see here, these are the cross trenches going across for a gravity sewer lateral. The main is on this side of the road over here. This is what the lift station on Alphonse looked like in June. Obviously, the main building was done and the wet well in this area was done, but they hadn't done any of the final landscaping or grading of the site. And this is where it is today. As you can see on the left, the permanent fencing has already been installed and all of the paving has been done in here. This was just to show a manhole that was going in on Cypress Avenue. They were in the process of backfilling that manhole. This is what some of the final trench paving looks like on a low-pressure main street, and this trench right here represents the original cut for the low pressure. So, they're milling that out down there, putting it in a truck, and then the final paving is going in on that. So, here's where we were in June. The whole area of Falmouth Heights is already complete. The area along Route twenty eight is complete. This is that area from, on Maravista, from Route twenty eight down to about where the creek is, that's already complete. This is the other piece that will need to be done in September here on Maravista itself. So, within the blue circle is where the activity is now, because everything on the southern portion of Maravista is already done. The yellow represents the mains have been installed. The blue represents that each property has a service line going to the property already. And so, this is what they completed up till now. You can see they put in a number of mains and service laterals on this area up here, and these mains right here are in. There's another main here, another main here that's already in. So, we only have a total of three streets up here and four more streets here, including that section on Maravista that needs to be done. So, that's where the project stands now.
Do we have any people connected, completely connected in the heights?
Yes, yes. I don't have a number tonight, but yes, we have already started receiving service connections.
Just two questions. One is just the big picture in terms of where you think we're going to end up on our budget. Over, under, how far into the contingency? That's the first question. Second question is, have you heard back from any residents that have had grinder pumps hooked up as to how that went? Was it within their cost estimate? Were there any problems?
I don't have any information on the connections that would have occurred on the low-pressure pumps. I know one of the first ones, and I wouldn't consider it necessarily an unbiased opinion, would have been Jerry's, but he was hooked up. But I know that his installation went well. He was pleased with the installation, and I know that he had done a fair amount of research in advance of that as far as pricing, so I believe he considered the pricing to be reasonable as well on his.
Great.
But overall, I would have to get back to you on that.
And just the whole project budget?
We have a fair amount of contingency that was allocated for the project, and I expect that right now...
What was that number while you're talking about it?
I'm sorry?
The amount of the contingency?
Well, the total project value with everything would have been in the thirty-seven million dollar range, of which this is a twenty-one million dollar contract. But one of the hardest things to anticipate is this level of road construction because of so many unknowns. The project's going very, very well, so where we are now, where I expect that we are going to be when it's done. Actual change orders for the project proper, meaning directly related to the contract, would have been about a million dollars. That would have been four point nine percent as a change order percentage. Where we actually are is five point nine percent, but that's two hundred fifty thousand dollars worth of drainage that we're doing with respect to Great Bay in order to try to improve the conditions there. So, we're doing a substantial amount of drainage there. I expect the whole project to come in under ten percent. So, that's well within where we had projected it.
Thank you.
And for this one, this one is going to come in within its five percent on this. So, the original, this is Long Pond, the original construction contract was forty point nine. Current value is forty point six, over seventy-two percent completed. That's actually as of July, not through June. The completion is officially going to be in May, but we will see if we're working currently on the startup plan, so that before the end of this year, we'll actually be running some of the process through its paces. And potential change orders on the project right now stand at about a hundred thousand dollars, but this gives us a negative change order value on this, so we're still working off of a credit, but I will go over that. So, this is the graph. You can see the lines are running fairly close together. The light blue line was the projected earned value. The adjusted value is the lesser value or the dark blue straight line, and then what we've actually paid them to date, twenty-seven million, twenty-seven point five million. But just as with Little Pond Sewer, the curves, as you can see, are running very, very close So, virtually all of the concrete work is complete on the plant. Every month, we were reporting in the range of nine pours and, you know, nine hundred yards of concrete. I think this last one was maybe five hundred yards of concrete, but that's about it for the concrete work on the project, which is good. On the raw water pump station, and that's a photo up in the upper right corner, the pumps have been installed, mechanical equipment they're working on, the electrical, and then, of course, they have a fair amount of landscaping to do. Hydrostatic ozone building, installing the mechanical equipment. The contactor building is basically complete. They're working on piping. And then, the mechanical room, which would include the ozone generators, that's what's going to be going in now. The LOX tank was also installed there. That's a liquid oxygen tank, which supplies the ozone generators. When you put oxygen in contact with electrical current, that's what forms ozone. So, we literally create the ozone on site. For hydrostatic tank testing, those are all the tanks on the plant. So, that's the eight hundred thousand gallon clear well, the two hundred thousand gallon backwash tank and backwash supply tank, the filters, the DAF units, and the raw water pump station wet well. The hydrostatic tank testing just means that we fill them with water and test them over a period of time to make sure that they don't leak. Right now, they're installing DAF equipment and piping, so for those of the board that were out there and had seen the site, when you look down into the holes in the plant, what was supposed to be the DAF units and the filters, they just look like holes. Well, now, the actual process piping is starting to go in. Installing the rooftop HVAC units for the main plant and constructing the residual lagoons. There are three lagoons, and this is a picture on the right-hand side showing one of the inlet slash overflow structures in one of the lagoons, and I'll talk about them a little bit. This is the rear of the building with the garage, and I know you can't see it. The real difference here is that all the doors have been installed, but they're in the up position right now, so they're on the ceiling and very difficult to see. This is what the pump chamber area looked like back in June. This would have been looking from the southeast to the northwest, and this is it today. So, in the front here, this concrete slab that you see, it's been backfilled around this area here, and this extends further off the photograph, but all of that is what will be underground, but all of those tanks, including the elevated slabs, are complete. This was a shot of the ozone chambers and the ozone building, so these are the chambers back here, and this will be the mechanical area here. And this is it today. This is the liquid oxygen tank that will feed the oxygen for the building itself. The plant interior pictures are very hard to show on this particular screen. I don't know why. They actually look good when they're on the computer, but nonetheless, the top center picture is the motor control center for the building, and there's a significant amount of electrical equipment that goes into that room. On the left is an interior view of the garage area, and you can see the garage doors up on the ceiling. This is welded stainless steel piping that's going in down in the DAF areas, process equipment piping. Okay. This is a larger, broader view of the site, looking from the southeast to the northwest. On the left here is the LOX tank. Behind that is the ozone chambers, and this is the backwash pump area in here, and these are the backwash tanks and the underground eight hundred thousand gallon clear well. This is the raw water pump station, what it looked like back in June on the upper left and then today, and I know the picture seems a little bit dark, but that's just the way to come out here. That vertical line that you see up there is not a smokestack. That's a crane. When I was taking the picture, they were lowering one of the three pumps into the facility, and they go in through the roof. You'll be able to see the roof on another picture, so these are the cables that are actually holding the pump while they were putting it in. And here is a top view of the raw water pump station, and right in the center of the roof area, you see three rectangular openings, if you will, hatches, and those are how we would have to take those pump assemblies out if they ever had to come out of the building and have to have a crane and pull them out vertically out of the top. Just another shot of the motor control center. These are the residual lagoons. A little bit difficult to see in the photograph here, but this one that has a concrete structure in the middle, that concrete structure is the inlet, and it has a sluice gate that acts as an overflow for the clear effluent that sits on the top of the water in that tank, and that would go into this lagoon back here. So, this lagoon with the concrete structure and the one adjacent to it will also have a concrete structure. Those are identical lagoons of eight hundred thousand gallons each capacity. That's where the plant residuals, meaning the material that comes off of the dissolved air flotation units, will go into that, as well as the backwash solids that come off the filters when we clean those, will go into these tanks. We only use about four hundred fifty thousand gallons of it, but we're required to have additional storage capacity from DEP, so we're up around eight hundred thousand gallons each. We're only going to use one at a time. Then, you take it out of service after about a year, maybe two years, depending on what the solids concentrations are. You switch over to the other one, drain this one down, and then we remove the solids and haul them off-site. So, both of these eight hundred thousand gallon tanks are going to be lined with a high-density polyethylene liner, so that any water that goes in there does not escape the lagoon. But this lagoon up here is a hundred and fifty thousand gallons, and that one is where the clear effluent on top of these tanks can be overflowed into that, and it will either evaporate off and/or percolate back into recharged groundwater, but that's clear effluent that would go into that tank. This is a larger aerial shot that we had back in June, and then here we are today. Not quite as far back, but I think you can see that there was substantial progress overall on the project. And now, here you can see the LOX tank sitting on its slab here and all of the other tanks over here. The elevated slabs are completed, so they haven't quite been backfilled completely yet, but that'll be in the foreseeable future. And then, back here is the generator. So, you can see that is a very substantial sixteen hundred fifty kilowatt generator for running the system. This is the front of the plant, looking from the northeast to the southwest, and that's roughly equivalent to that. So, that's where we would be and where we are going. That's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. No feature film tonight, sorry.
What's your conservative estimate as to when this plant will come online to start servicing our water?
Well, there's a couple of different things. One is we have what's known as substantial completion. Substantial completion is when the retainage that we hold on the contractor, most of it gets returned to the contractor. And for all intents and purposes, that point in time means that you have beneficial use of whatever it is that you're building. So, if you had a car and the tires were on, the engine and transmission was in, and you had a driver's seat, and you could go from point A to point B, even though it wasn't painted, had no air conditioning, right? That's substantial completion. So, that's one target time. That'll occur at the beginning of next year, late this year.
I'm going to answer this question if I can. February eighth is our target date on our schedule right now to put water into the distribution system. Contingency here is getting the state to approve. We'll have it built. We'll have it tested. We'll have it ready to go. So, I'm shooting from February eighth as the early date and March first as the late date, giving the state three weeks to have to...
May I repeat that?
...make some adjustments or, you know, prove that they know something about water treatment to us.
Which we do expect to happen.
I think Sam's, you know, just mentioning the microphone that wasn't on, so you might, if you could just recap or repeat.
You can do it.
February eighth is when we're actually planning on being able to theoretically introduce water into the system. That presumes that everything does go correctly, which it seldom does. Usually, during the startup of a plant like this, you're going to have a number of bugs that you have to work out, because when you actually deliver that water into the system, everything has to be correct. And it takes a while to get some of the systems actually started, if you will. So, February eighth is a good estimate with the contractor, and I know Steve's been working diligently on that, because if it fails, for whatever reason, we fail to meet that deadline, we have sufficient amount of time to be able to work it through in order to get it up and running for later in the spring and certainly before the summer.
Just a follow-up. Given, you know, the publicity in terms of water flushing and when people notice, you know, rusty water and particularly, you know, there's a lot of Facebook postings from East Falmouth where I live, and do you have sort of a community outreach program designed so that when we get to that point, it'll be on FCTV, on the town website, or, you know, sort of a weekly update about what, you know, if there is an issue, what's the reason for the issue? Is it anything to be concerned with? Or, you know, on the other hand, as progress is being made, is...I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on communicating that to the public?
The easiest and best way to do it would be through the town's website, and the town's redoing its website right now. So, I'm expecting that we're going to have a much more functional website to begin with, make it easier for people to navigate two different things. We're also working on the ability to be able to generate a service request through the computer, so that we'll receive it that way, so you don't have to wait till the next day and call and what have you. You can punch in a request on the computer, and then you'll be able to actually track the condition of that request, so that's true for water quality complaints as well. I think it's beneficial for people to understand, though, that you have two major components to any water system. It doesn't matter. You have your sources. You have your distribution system. You can take Poland Springs water as a source, and if you're pumping through a hundred-year-old distribution system, you're still going to have issues before it gets to a person's tap. Now, we've been working on the mains for a number of years, and I think that the board and the town has been very, very good with that. We've been very aggressive, replaced a lot of mains. Even on Maravista, when I showed you that whole peninsula, we replaced that twelve, we put in a twelve-inch main along that whole area several years ago in anticipation of this. We're talking about a new sixteen-inch transmission main down Main Street, eighteen thousand feet. That's over three miles. That'll be coming within the next couple of years. We did a $6.6 million main rehabilitation project several years ago, which included a number of the major transmission mains in town in order to get to this point with the plant. So, when the plant comes online, it's going to be in a position to actually start fixing problems and correcting problems. So, from a water conditioning perspective, there's two issues with the plant. One is, as currently, it's an unfiltered surface water source. Therefore, all of the particulates are in that pond. We hit it with chlorine and send it on its way. That's what gets into the distribution system. It causes problems. Then you have rusty water from very old online mains. They can cause localized problems. So, the town's focus, if you will, for future years, will be targeting the distribution system to start replacing some of these antiquated mains that we have. But we've been doing it in a big way over the last 15, 20 years. So, it's still going to take some time, but this is a major, major improvement.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, and, I mean, we're privy to the great presentations that you do, and obviously, Mr. Rafferty has given us a lot of information. But I think, just to follow what you're saying, Sue, it might be helpful, not to create any more work for you, but just as we get ready, I think a lot of folks don't understand because it's been a long-term process and because there are these kind of dual issues when it comes to, you know, both the source and the distribution, it might be helpful for there to be some further public presentation for people to be able to just, you know, really understand what the town has committed to for this project and also going forward. Because I think, you know, it is something that I know I hear about. I know we've all experienced different water quality issues, and I think it's sometimes easy to think that we're not making progress. But, you know, hopefully, that information being put out there for the public might be, you know, just a resource for people to have a sense of where we are and where we're heading.
Yes, and near the end of the project, when I say near the end, the end of this year, and this is predominantly due to other issues in other towns, you know, that people see on the news and what have you. In order to give Falmouth residents a much greater understanding of what it actually means from a system perspective, we're going to be doing a presentation as part of one of these presentations that will bring all of that together. So, everybody sees the tanks, but nobody knows what they do, you know? And they play a very important role. No one really knows what sources we have or what they do. This is one treatment plant. We already have another one. We have the Crookopon Treatment Plant, which was $6 million. The base paid for most of that, but that's a very sophisticated plant as well, handles two of our wells. So, we only have two other sources of ours that are currently not treated, as far as filtered, if you will. But I think that would go a long way for that understanding, is bringing the whole system together so that people can see it graphically. I'll be able to show graphically how it works, what it means, and what water quality actually means. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. Next item is a discussion of the, or a follow-up from an architect on the potential senior center sites from Joel Bargman. I thought I saw Joel out in the hallway also.
Yes.
There's Joel.
Welcome, Joel. We'll need to bring up the microphone for you as well. Thanks, Megan.
And Joel, I'm not sure if you've been given privy to the fact that we are not following through on the Kunma City Inn, so you do not need to include that in any part of your presentation.
Okay, it's at the end.
Great.
Okay, my name's Joel Bargman. Name in the firm is BH plus A, and we were asked to look at several issues in Phase Two of the site selection study. And the charge to us was really seven steps, which I know is difficult to see on this, but it's just a reminder. More information was sought on particular sites, including soil conditions, which site might be better or worse from a sanitary sewer perspective or a construction perspective due to soil conditions. Which site might have opportunities or problems with driveways and sightlines? That was category two. One is to relook at the parking demand. We brought the traffic consultant back on board, and we did several ways of looking at the traffic demand for the center and came up with a conclusion on that. The fourth task was to evaluate with the town planner the community context for these, which became six site analyses for us. From that comparative site development costs were determined and isolated out. So, you have in the cost estimates, the building cost and site costs. And then we updated each one of the site plans. I know you can't see this, but I just have this on to show that each site's been tracked for site work, building cost, and then certain sites require a playing field to be removed or relocated. In the case of Gus Canty, there's a little outdoor playground that's impacted by some of the work. The sort of Cliff Notes or the Spark Notes version of that table is this. And the costs are put into a range, and the costs are expressed as the total project cost. So, that's not just the construction cost. That's the construction cost plus the soft costs that go into constructing the project, the owner's, project manager, the architect and engineers, the moving costs, all of the assorted... The cost ranges are quite similar to what we had last year. You have a little bit of inflation added in, but as one of the charges from the town manager's request for further information to us was to reduce the amount of paved parking, and those two items sort of balanced each other off. So, what I mean by that is the, each one of these sites has a full complement of day-to-day parking, but on the events, special events, the overflow parking is done as stabilized turf, so you don't have as much asphalt on the site, and it's a little bit more sustainable option. So, from a building perspective, the high school on Site Two, which is the Brick Hillen Road site, it has a slightly larger cost because it has a 2,500-foot sewer line to get from Brick Hillen Road to the pump station that is on the high school property. And so, that is one reason why High School Site Two is a little bit more expensive than High School Site Three. High School Site Four is the undeveloped site in the northeast portion of the property, and it has a higher cost due to the soil conditions there, which are terminal moraine soils. So, they have boulders in them, they have higher concentrations of silt, and it would be slightly more expensive. Plus, it has a long access road to it, so the extension of site utilities makes High School Site Four more expensive. I do want to touch on school administration. You see basement, I'll show you a section of this. You don't have to put the basement in, but it's sort of a low-cost option. Low-cost, I put in quotes. So, we wanted to have that on for you to consider. I could back half of that out, and I will show you how we could do that if you wanted to. This is not really relevant, other than to show you that Site Four is sort of penalized by its undeveloped nature, so it has significantly higher site costs, that undeveloped site on the north section of the property. So, Site Four is here on the north part of the property. This is Gifford Street extension of the high school. This is Brick Hillen Road. So, we have Site Two. Site Three is at the hockey, field hockey fields. Site Four is there in the undeveloped area. And then in addition, this site and this site occupy athletic fields, and those athletic fields have to be relocated. There are two sites. One is this that we looked at last year, and this year, we looked at some areas in here that are a little bit closer to the existing parking area and a little bit easier to access. To get to this site, you sort of have to come in, wind your way around, and get to the new parking lot that would be here. So, we wanted to look at it. It turns out there's offsetting costs on these two sites, so they're about the same cost of fields. You have significantly more fill here because it's a sloping site, but you don't have your infrastructure because your access and parking are available. These site plans were updated. So, this is Brick Hillen Road, this is what's called High School Site Two. You can see there's 75 spaces paved. The overflow parking is here. There happens to be an existing lot here where the overflow parking could go, but it's a little bit more remote from the senior center. But it's certainly something to look at if this site goes into the next phase. Do you connect these two with a little connector road and eliminate this backup parking? Or, something to consider. This site comes in off of Brick Hillen Road, has great sightlines, and then would connect to the existing service road going up there. So, as I mentioned, that particular site, the sewer pump station is right here at the bottom of the tennis courts on the north side of the site. So, to get from this building up to there is about 2,500 feet, and that's the slight penalty of the Brick Hillen Road, High School Site Two. And Site Three is on the existing field hockey field. You have, again, the 75 spaces of parking. You have the overflow parking here, and then, of course, on the other side of the tennis courts, there's plenty of paved parking existing as well. This site benefits from being close to the pump station. You could put that sewer line in, not having to go through any construction. Before the building was built, you just put a line in and connect into the pump station. Both of those options are feasible. We've reviewed that with the town sewer department and with DEP and our civil engineer. So, there's the existing pump station that you connect into. It's right here on the corner of the tennis courts, the field hockey field. The one high school site that doesn't require a field to be replaced is Site Number Four. You basically would come in off of Gifford Street extension, up on the edge of the existing parking lot, and then unfortunately, there's a rather long access road. So, it burdens this particular option with the cost that the others don't have. Site utilities have to come up here and the access road. Once you get there, it's actually quite a nice site. It's secluded, could have very nice paths. So, if the town wanted a site that's more private, and that's a big if, this one certainly foots the bill. And we were suggesting that there may be a way to have a, in negotiation, have an escape valve out to Campus Drive. You'd obviously have to negotiate that with the landholder there, but it would be nice to have a second way in and out to this site in case there's a public emergency and an accident here. Public safety could get to it from a different orientation.
Joel, at one point, the road had been talked about going north of the tennis courts. But I felt that was way too steep up and down. Does this road avoid the steepness?
This was the flattest road we could come in. From here to here, it rides the contours, and from here to here, there's a map in the book, and it shows there's a kettle hole and a kettle hole that you have to sort of bridge. So, this area is filled. This area is actually quite flat. And then one of the opportunities of when you fill the area there, you do have to put guardrails on the road, so that adds to the cost of that. But, I mean, I think the feeling from the design team was all three of these sites have an advantage. This has visibility. This has sort of ease of construction and sort of a nice, easy site and some remoteness. And then this one is even more remote, if that's perceived as an advantage. The school administration site, we were asked to look at possibly putting the building on Sandwich Road. And then the charge was actually to put the parking in front of the building, but we found that you could sort of reuse the ridge of the site and get the parking on that ridge, push the building to the road, and between the school administration need, which is this building, and the senior center, we could get the parking here. We could either get overflow parking down here, which I didn't care for myself because this front area is such an iconic green for the community. So, our suggestion in the study was to sort of cut the parking off before the fence that defines that green, and then the overflow parking would be in the field. The low range just leaves the field as is. In the higher range cost, we said you may want to, you could either nudge the field a little bit to the right and get a little bit more parking in, or the, that is a rather old field, so the fence and that is old and would be nice to be replaced. That cost's been isolated in the cost estimates. What you have on Sandwich Road is...
Joel, hold on.
Yeah?
Could you go back just one?
Yep.
If I might, Mr. Chair. I'm a little bit confused by the parking issue. So, looking right here, it looks like you leave the field intact. It could still be played on?
Yeah.
Okay. And is that the right number of parking in terms of the statistical numbers for the building that's being planned as a senior center on this site?
You needed 75 for the senior center and 28 for the school administration. So, it's 103 spaces on this site would be in the base scheme. And the overflow parking, it's anticipated that the peak demand would be 125 cars, and so the overflow parking would be on this edge of the field.
Okay, so, you obviously would need overflow parking.
Yes.
And it's not shown here.
You could either do it here, or we could do it there. And so, the cost of this is in the estimate. My suggestion was, I thought it would be better to put it here than in the front yard.
And that would necessitate moving the field?
No, you could do it in the outfield, and you just stabilize the turf in the outfield and let the cars go into that.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, there's, you can see the outfield line here.
Yeah.
So, there's some area there. You know, I would love to move the outfield, just, even if you could move it 10 feet or 15 feet over, it just gives you a little bit more breathing room around the building and would give you a little bit easier way to put in the overflow parking.
Do you have a number for that?
It's in the cost estimate. I believe it was... Well, it's in the book. I can get that number for you later. It's... It was $275,000 to move it and upgrade the fences, upgrade the lights. That's one of the, this is one of the only fields that has lights. The other, the high school fields don't have light, so...
Right.
One of the costs of moving that is the light bulb. And so, in the base scheme, we didn't do it because we figured it was an unnecessary cost.
Okay, thank you.
This, because it's a sloping site, when Heather gave me the request for proposal, it was sort of astute. They pointed out that you could either, you have a sloping site, and if you put the building up at the level of the existing parking lot, the site slopes against the building. You could conceivably enter at the upper level of the senior center and go down to the second floor, but the slope isn't quite enough. You only get about three and a half, four feet of window there. So, you'd really feel like you're in a basement on that lower level. So, in our cost estimate, we went up. So, you came in and you went up, and we said you could build a crawl space, but once you build a crawl space, why not build the basement? Because it's inexpensive space, and towns are always looking for space in the future. So, you wouldn't necessarily finish it, but this cost estimate included $715,000 to add the basement to that. If you didn't want to do that and you just wanted to do the crawl space, you could save half of that, 715, so...
Except that's a good point because a lot of our programming committee visited a lot of senior centers, and it was sort of a reoccurring theme of directors that the... one wish or amongst the top wish was that they had more storage.
Right.
So that might be something well worth considering. I appreciate you pointing that out.
And this site actually happens to be a good site for a basement, because it slopes, it's not a wet site. You'll see in the report, geotechnical engineer, who's a soil scientist, went through and looked at each one of the sites, and they all come back very favorable from a foundation perspective and construction perspective. The last site, if I take Kuna Maset out of the equation, is the Gus Canty. And the last time we looked at doing a major addition to it and leaving the recreation here, this time we were asked to look at the building as if it was a renovation for the senior center. I don't know where the displaced program goes, and so that's not accounted for in the cost estimates. But the building has benefited from an HVAC, heating and air conditioning upgrade. It has a nice gym that you can get to as you come into the building, separate access to the gym without having to go through the other portions of the building. The size of the building is such that you couldn't get the multipurpose room that the seniors need, so the side of the Gus Canty building, right here, would have a 3, 3,500 square foot addition constructed on it, and that addition impacts the little playground there somewhat. The main issue with Gus Canty, it's better seen here, and I left the pictures unenhanced, because the windows are quite small on the second floor. The ceilings are relatively low. The ceiling is the original ceiling for the building. The lights are the original buildings. The whole aesthetic of the building is not what you would have in a senior center. So we looked at it two ways. We did a base estimate that said you don't really enhance the finishes and you move the seniors program in here. And then the higher range cost said, okay, you know, I really don't want to have metal doors, and we need to get LED lights that are more energy efficient and nice carpet and enhance the aesthetics of that in addition to putting the addition onto that building. So the last one was the Kuna Maset, which the reason we're a little bit late here is that came in to our assignment late in the game, and I was trying to pull it all together as one document, so.
Understand, appreciate that.
Any questions for Joel from the board?
What, if any, meetings in connection with this sort of updated analysis did you have with the school committee regarding their, the proposed buildings on their site?
We had had those in the previous phase, and we had, I had talked briefly with Patrick, and the thought was, keep going, they're on board, and he was very helpful in getting information on the high school and that. So my communication was through the facilities group this time, but they're aware of what was going on.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much, and I do appreciate you going the Kuna Maset in into the picture, and I'm sorry that you didn't get a chance to report on the good work you did on that, but-
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joel.
I think the other thing we do need to weigh into this, into the figures we received from Joel, is it is also still based on a square footage, and part of the task that we have given your subcommittee is to look at all those figures we have, could say, well, we could be doing this for 80% of that, because we may decide to downgrade it no matter where it is. Or downsize it. But this allows us to compare each site if we did the same kind of building at each site. I think that's an important thing to do. I think our next step is now, are we ready to choose a site? And how soon can we be ready to choose a site? And I think the sooner we are ready to choose, the better.
I appreciate your point of the programming committee being able to present its report as sort of, you know, I think likely the final step of information this selectman may need to make the decision. So I would, you know, we, I believe we have a meeting coming up Thursday.
Yes.
For, and so that report should be ready, would you say, two weeks?
Shortly. Essentially, we, you know, we just wanted to make sure that everyone who was on the committee had time to give their feedback, because we did really ask, a lot was asked of the committee, and people put a lot of time and energy, and we wanted, we had a couple of folks who hadn't been able to put their assessment together. We received that, the last of it last week, and we just want to make sure everyone's, you know, thoughts, comments are represented in the final report. So I would say, I think that's a fair assessment.
But are the program needs site-specific? Does it matter which site we choose for, based on your committee's work?
It's really the square footage, I think, is the most relevant.
And any of these sites could handle the bigger square footage, we know. And so it's really, from your committee's report, do we want to consider a lesser square footage, which would reduce the cost, I assume, anyplace, because it's, I mean, a lot of the building cost is a per-square-foot cost. So I think that your committee's report, I'm not sure really weighs in our committee, this board's site choice.
Well, maybe marginally, in terms of, for example, the questions I was asking, Joel, with respect to the school administration site. I suppose if the building got tweaked a little smaller, the parking numbers would be tweaked a little smaller, and we may not need to include added patient of a field, which could be as much as, you know, a number of 250,000, you know, it's, I think it's, for a two-week period, I think I'm probably in favor of just giving, pondering this report that we just received, getting the information, and then probably, you know, on very short stead, being ready to make a decision.
Because our goal is really to be able to come back to town meeting in November with at least some kind of schematic design on a specific site. And that's where we're, I don't think it's possible for us to do much more than that, but at least come back with that kind of a report to the November town meeting. And so if in two weeks, we can, at our next meeting in two weeks, we can have that report and make that decision, I would hope that would be something that we could all move forward to.
Yes, and I think just to, you know, to explain that the work that went into that, for that committee, was looking at, you know, members did go through each site and really talk about how programming might connect with that site. So just for all the work and all, really, the expertise that was brought to that committee, because we had individuals who are coming at the problem or the challenge from really a number of perspectives, I think it would be, you know, worth that two weeks, we're meeting again, to really have that information, again, so that the public can hear it, we can all hear it and use it going forward.
And one, sorry, just one final point, also that the site selection committee would have the opportunity to review this report and anyone else.
Are there any questions people have out there that they feel we need to get answered two weeks hence before we make a decision?
Ms. Cune? Is that there?
Yes, please. Actually, let me move the microphone back.
Oh, I've got it.
I'll give Megan.
Sure.
Sure.
Hi, Julie Matthews, Precinct One. I appreciate the, you know, the pictures at all. I just wonder, where are my children going to play if the rec center turns into a senior center? There's not that much going on for children in this community and to, I mean, is there a plan for a new recreation center? I heard, you know, from the report how it's, doesn't look nice in there and whatever, but we do find there. My family enjoys going there, and there's programming there for young families. It concerns me greatly if there isn't another replacement for that. Maybe there is, maybe, I don't know. This is my first meeting I've been to.
It is not something we have discussed, but I'll tell you personally, we'll be building, and if we ever, if we adopt that plan, we'll be having to build a new rec center.
And will that be something that takes 10, 15 years? My kids will be in college. I mean, you know, it's, I think it has to be together.
No, I think, just to be clear, I don't think that anyone's intention is that the rec center disappears. I think that we're looking at, you know, the use of some of these different spaces. So, and certainly, I don't think that the criticism was that the rec isn't nice, it was just what would go on there if you were rehabbing it or sort of, you know, updating it in some ways like that. So certainly, I think everyone here really values what goes on at the rec.
Right.
We've all had children who have utilized it, and the idea isn't that where, you know, the rec center is, you know, disappears for this project.
Okay.
So I hope that that doesn't come across as a message that we, that people would take away from this.
I concur wholeheartedly.
So there would still be a recreation center there for children, not just?
I don't think the town of Falmouth is getting rid of our rec center anytime soon.
That's a silly question, I don't know.
No, it's not a silly question. I can completely understand how that presentation might have come across that way.
Okay.
And the reason why Joel gave that presentation is that we did have that question asked about the rec center as being an addition built on and being a combined rec center and senior center. And so we already had that information. And so now the question was, say, what if this just became the senior center? What would the cost be? What would it look like?
Right, well, and that's what his report said, if it's just the senior center.
And we just want as much information as we can, so we have that piece of information to say, oh, well, that's another piece, something else to know as we try and put everything together.
I think what Chairman Jones is saying is there was another piece that happened a while ago about what if we built onto the rec. We didn't go over that tonight.
Right.
But that has also been, you know, looked at, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just happened to be here, but I saw the presentation. As someone who had an elderly mother who was going to the senior center, just keep in mind that people going to the senior center may be in wheelchairs, they may be with walkers, especially the school administration building site seemed as if the parking might be quite far from the doors. So I think that's just something, something to keep in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Sandy Cuny, Chairman of the Falmouth Recreation Committee. Actually, originally, I brought forth the idea of adding an addition onto the rec center for seniors, because the seniors have before used our building when theirs was being remodeled, and it fit very nicely. I was just a little concerned when I saw this type of, it didn't really show that you could bring the road in off Dillingham, and it didn't really show the addition and how it would be incorporated. Instead, you talked about replacing the recreation somewhere else, where indeed, there could be an addition where it could incorporate, but that's not what shows here, so I don't think the public has a very good idea of how you could do that. Certainly, playgrounds can be moved, and new playgrounds can be built. So I, you know, again, that was one of my sights, that I feel the location for seniors is great. It's on Main Street, it's close to everything, it's close to their old building, if you wanted to incorporate. I'm looking at the designs at the high school, and it would be great to have a brand-new building at $10 million, but I was looking at the parking lots, and it's true, they look like they're a distance away, and you might want to think about the elderly and how they get from the parking lot to their building. It shouldn't be that far. Thank you.
Could I insert a question? I had a question in my mind, are we then abandoning the idea that we would build an addition onto the Gus Canty so that we would incorporate both rec center activities and senior center activities? Or is that still an option that's on the table?
I think it's an option, we had the information before, so it is still an option that we could consider. It is something that certainly the working group suggested that the better site is at the high school site, and the preferences have been the high school site, and have asked that we not put it at Gus Canty and not put it on Route 28, anywhere on Route 28, because of the dangers of traffic. And they were very clear in their work, committee work, and it was very clear at the public forums that we had, that there was a great preference for the seniors at the high school.
Just, I am confused, because to my recollection, this is the first time that we looked at Gus Canty and the senior center as some sort of mishmash, and that's why I think a lot of people are confused. I think we had always talked about it as being on the same site and maybe, you know, having some sort of interrelationship, but certainly not just having one room or, you know, it was tough for me, based upon my understanding, to follow that in the analysis and also with the presentation. So, are we saying that we would have to do, have Joel do another sketch based upon that understanding? If you-
Certainly, just to clarify, by my memory, if I may, Joel's earlier report, which was December of last year, included the option, which would be an additional building adjacent to but interconnected with the Gus Canty Community Center. So that report is online, has been online, including cost estimates that Joel Bergman and his team provided for that option. So, subject only to this board continuing to consider that option, it is still in play, and I fully anticipated it would be. As Joel noted, this was just another variation, which had not been looked at to include with the mix.
It did not make sense to ask Joel to repeat the information on a previous report.
Oh, no, no.
And so when we asked for new information, we said, all right, take a look, we needed new, more information on the high school site, more specific on those two sites. Then we had the Kuna Maset, and we threw in there, and we said, and another option, let's just ask the question, what would happen if the Gus Canty Center were a senior center? Not saying it's a good idea, but it's just, having more information's a good idea. And say, oh, that's what it would look like.
Well, the-
If you want, we can have votes saying, we're not going to do that, just so people can be relieved that we're not going to do that, but-
Well, what I would say is, when we look at all of the sites, if we could have the information from the original choice, because I think if we, you know, as it's come up tonight as a question, in order to compare apples to apples, we would have to, and this is the first I've heard of constructing a new rec center, but we would have to add the construction costs of a new rec center to that option, unless we took, back the option that Ms. Cuny was talking about, which is the one that was more apples to apples. So that would be another reason to look at that, I think, within two weeks.
Michael Haley in Clifford Lane. And Chairman Jones just said this, the seniors want it at the high school by all records. Why not just pick one of those three spots at the high school? Those should be your three, here, here, and here. The administration building, the traffic is crazy. And then the same thing with the Gus Canty building, new roads, and also the busyness of 28. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I quickly answered that, saying, we're considering it all. It's a $10 million question, and we want to be very careful in how we spend the town's $10 million.
And just one point on yours, if I might. Also, they, it's not really been focused on, both of those sites have two accesses. So it's, you know, the Gus Canty has two accesses, and also the administration building has two accesses. So that's just part of what's being considered.
Mr. Scherer?
Dan Scherer. I'm just concerned about the Gus Canty Center, the parking. We don't almost have enough parking now. We have things going on out front of it during the, what, summer months. We have baseball games there, baseball camps there, and I don't think there's enough parking there, unless we take out most of the football field. So that's my big problem with Gus Canty. Plus, I don't think, as a senior, that it's an inviting building inside. It's not warm, it's not somebody that I want to go to enjoy a full day or so forth. So that's a problem, what I have. Now, the other thing is, Site Three, where you're going to, oh, build a new field hockey field, I think would be excellent, because right now, we need an artificial field for the young ladies that play field hockey. You can't really have a good field hockey team if you're on grass, because you can't compete with a team, with teams we play against that have artificial fields. So right in that thing, I- So right in that thing, I hope that the cost of that field is an artificial one, not a grass one.
Replacing in kind.
A grass field for field hockey is, pardon me, useless. And it's about time we did something for women's sports, or young ladies' sports in this town. We seem to have gone over big with all male fields are good, baseball, football, and so forth. We haven't thought of the women's field at all, and I think it's about time we do, if we use that site. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you all very much. We do hope to have the report back from the Program Needs Committee, and look forward to trying to make a decision.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair?
Megan, is it?
I just had a quick request, and I think it's somewhat of what Sue's saying. But I find this, the comparative cost range matrix, very helpful. But if we could have that earlier Gus Canty workup in that matrix, I think it would be really helpful. I think that's what you're saying. I just want to, I just want to see the visual, because I think that it just boils everything down for people to look at, and for us to really compare things appropriately.
Is that something we can do, or we have to, or is that something?
Well, we would ask for Joel's assistance, because he has the original documents on that. And I see that Joel's still with us, and shaking his head, so I think that he can very ably assist us in assembling that into a single document, since both of them are his original documents. Joel, we appreciate that.
We're looking like a page.
Yeah, being expanded summary page, I think.
You can go into that, kind of mess it in column.
Thank you.
Very helpful, Joel. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Phil Alfonso, I sort of have a dream about the senior center. And I apologize, sir. I've got to disagree with you. If I see an unpleasant building, it's the current building the seniors are in now. It's a rundown hall that people are, so for you to say that about the rec center, it's, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, so ideally, we have giant sponsors in this town. Road Race being the number one. They love to throw millions of dollars per year at an amazing charity, nonprofit, 501(c)(3), whatever you want to call it. If you take the seniors, and you give them the rec center, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I love you. I'm sorry. But if you give the seniors the rec center, you blow open Dillingham Avenue for parking. That building is already equipped in the ground for aquatics. You can have, whether, obviously, you probably wouldn't do an Olympic pool, but through town meeting, we could do aquatic therapy sort of pool area. You could revamp the building that's there currently, and expand into that backyard sort of field area for the football field. Now ideally, you take the football program and the recreation center over to the high school. This is my dream. So what you would have is, you would have the Falmouth Road Race Fieldhouse, for example. Have a non-cancerous athletic field, because I understand a lot of those black little, whatever they are, they're, they're sort of bad news. But they do have ones that are less cancerous. That track needs to be replaced. That track used to be the fastest running track in the country when it was new. And it's run down now, so a lot of the runners aren't coming here for that anymore. You have every single school bus, the last stop that they make is at the high school. Kids are safe. Kids are out of the way. The seniors, by giving them the Gus Canty building, you have on Scranton Avenue, many senior living sort of housing area there. What's that right next to Windfall?
Admiralty.
The Admiralty. Bus route.
It's Harborview.
Harborview Apartments. I apologize.
It's an old-school name.
02536. White Down Precinct One. So you've got the bus route. You've got Main Street right there. It's so usable for senior citizens. It's not out of the way. I feel like the high school is out of the way. I feel like the admin building is deadly, dangerous. It's awful. That, to try to get anywhere around there, especially in summertime, it's gridlock. It doesn't move. I feel like by giving them the Gus Canty building, you blow open Dillingham Avenue in the back, you make parking over there, you have an aquatic section towards where the basketball area is, give them the Commodores, so the baseball still stays downtown. Friday night football is played at Falmouth High School for a change, on a brand-new turf field. So I don't know how this is going to happen. I'm new to town meeting. I'm new to this whole process here, but I'm going to get the bell ringing on this, because I love the idea. Hopefully, you guys don't hate it. But I see the division that way as being more productive for seniors and youth. Thank you.
Having sat through the forum at the library, or two or three forums at the library, to tell the seniors we're going to go back to the Gus Canty site, I would find very, very hard for me to be able to support it. And I think there are some great ideas that could work out well combined that, but I'm going to continue to listen to the seniors, who were very, very strong in their sentiment, and not quite unanimous, but pretty darn close to it, that both the Gus Canty site and administration site were not in their interest, and they really were pushing for the high school. All right. Can we move on?
Yes. Got a lot of people waiting.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Suso, we have the discussion of the proposed community services department. I expect this to be an ongoing discussion. I think there's a lot of information we need to collect from different committee members, from different committee chairs, and from the administration, as we consider this. And this is something that the board many years ago, when Mr. Suso was hired, we really challenged him to come up with ways that we can consolidate some of the departments, and be able to increase our efficiencies within the management of the town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple, very brief slides. As you, thank you. As you noted, actually, around the time I was arriving as town manager, the Charter Review Committee made a strong recommendation. Oh, thank you. Charter Review Committee made a strong recommendation for administrative restructuring. I know that was presented to the Board of Selectmen, and periodically has been a renewed appeal. And in addition, of course, this board, as well as other members of the board, who've been selectmen since my arrival, have made one of my marching orders, consideration as the Falmouth Charter provides for, again, administrative reorganization and restructuring, which is within the purview of the Town Manager's Office, working with the Board of Selectmen. This proposed community services department, we've talked about a little, somewhat in the past, again, it could potentially include those departments noted. It would not be created to eliminate any department at all. It just would create an umbrella structure that would facilitate enhanced organization, enhanced efficiency, enhanced teamwork, and really continue to expand upon the good work that is now underway. And I do want to underscore at the bottom, it would involve administration and staffing structure only. It has absolutely no impact on the existing board or committee structure, none whatsoever. There's no magic that has to create, include these various functions, but those are suggested for Board of Selectmen consideration.
I'm going to see if I can advance this slide.
This is the second and last slide, where this is not a new concept. It's not a novel concept. In fact, it's quite common. And this is just a, really a random view of a number of communities. In the Commonwealth. Who have essentially a similar, if not identical, department. Gives you some idea of population size, and the respective communities noted. It mentions the departments that are included in their particular grouping of community service concept. The one major variation is how oversight is achieved. And as I've mentioned to the board in the past, one of the things that I was looking at was how to structure the, really, the facilitator, the enabler, in terms of the administrative structure. And it's done in various ways. As you can see at the bottom of the table on the proposed Falmouth, what I am suggesting is that the Assistant Town Manager, the existing Assistant Town Manager function, assume that oversight role, which can be done quite easily. Obviously, that is a position which is currently vacant, but hopefully, in the next 30 to 60 days, we will have an individual occupying that area, and would easily assume the oversight of the community development services, community services department functions. I do want to underscore too, because there's been a little confusion, this is not in any way a discussion of the community development department. That is a totally different initiative that we're working with, with the Board of Selectmen. Has absolutely nothing to do with community development. This is only about, whoops, this is only about, plug this back in. This is only about community services function. And again, as reflected in many communities, some in our area, some a little further away in the Commonwealth. Happy to answer any questions that the board members may have. I should note that I have had a discussion with all the department heads that would be involved in this proposal, conceivably. And also, I've emailed the chairs of the various committees that have laid us on contact with these departments, and shared with them some basic information on this community services concept, invited their attending this evening, and/or providing written comments to me and/or the Board of Selectmen as well. And I know several of those individuals are with us here this evening, and want to thank them all for coming.
Mr. Chair, if you, Mr. Suso, if you could just explain a little bit what you see
the value, you know, just elaborate, or just sort of explain a bit more about what the value of this type of consolidation would be.
Well, a primary value is to enhance interdepartmental cooperation, some of which is occurring currently, to the, really, to the positive of those department heads involved. But for instance, these departments do not all have to be in the same building, nor are they in the same building. But many of them have connections, one with the other. Not all, but many do. Human Services, Veteran Services, Senior Center, there's a lot of sharing there. Recreation and beaches, and others. One of the things that is not built in, and is not automatic, but which we want to further encourage, is a sharing of clerical services, particularly when there's a time of an emergency, sick leave, a vacation. One or more departments are caught in alerts, need some backup in terms of clerical support, even if it's something as simple as answering telephones, providing assistance with various activities at peak times. We do have those resources in all of these departments, with the exception of one in particular that comes to mind. And this kind of sharing, I think, can make the town that much more cost-efficient and cost-effective in the way we allocate our current resources. I do want to underscore, this is not proposing the need to set aside any additional funds, or create any new positions. It is operating within the structure that is already in place, and is going to increase our efficiency, and support, and sense of teamwork. It also formalizes a direct connection with all of these community services departments, with the Town Manager's Office, particularly working directly with the Assistant Town Manager. That is not markedly different from what we have had in the past, where these departments can come and interact with me. My door's always open. And as I know all the staff members we work with will affirm, that is a working relationship that is very good. But it also provides support in the Assistant Town Manager's Office, in the event that the Town Manager happens to be tied up in a meeting, and there's something urgent. It reinforces that direct line of communication. So it's really taking what are a number of good ingredients, building upon them, enhancing them, and strengthening them in terms of our internal working relationship, and most importantly, how we serve our customers on a day-to-day basis, and doing it more cost-effectively.
Mr. Patterson?
Yes. In thinking about this reorganization, one of the questions I had is, how is this actually going to improve communication from the existing departments, really up to the top, for working on things like budgets, for all kinds of, you talked about possibly covering each other when there's a vacancy due to illness, or whatever, emergency. But to what extent is this going to actually improve, if you will, the opportunity for one of these departments to actually get some attention at the top, and a more quick and responsive kind of reaction?
Well, because we're, we would be formalizing a direct connection, within this case, the Assistant Town Manager's Office. That connection would be formalized. It is now formalized. The connection which is formalized is with the Town Manager, and of course, with the multiplicity of departments, all answering directly to the Town Manager, as is our current system, and as was pointed out by the Charter Review Committee, there are inherent inefficiencies there, because the Town Manager's only one person. So by spreading that throughout the Town Manager's Office organization, to include the Assistant Town Manager in this case, it really strengthens the opportunity for those day-to-day connections, and encourages them, and also encourages that internal teamwork between these many functions, to, I think, really strengthen and improve the efficiency of the way we operate on a day-to-day basis.
Just as a follow-up, currently, when you have meetings with your department heads, do you ever meet with all of them at the same time, or is it always going to be over a particular issue, and you just pull in the related departments that might, in other words, right now, how are you handling sort of regular department communication and interaction between department heads?
Well, currently, when we have a department heads meeting, and it tends to be every couple months, we fill the Selectmen's Meeting Room with all the people that attend. So basically, all the seats here are filled, and we cover all those issues. Could we operate more efficiently? I think this structure is a suggestion of a way in which we could do that, with some decentralized meetings of affected departments and affected offices, in a much more effective, customer-friendly way. But it would not be to the exclusion of the need to bring everybody together when it's an important thing to do, because communication is king, and we do not want to do anything that would affect that in any negative way.
Mr. Rand?
Sure. Just tell me if I'm correct here, because it seems to me that what you're describing would allow greater, more detailed access by department heads, or, you know, by these various, among these various departments, with the Assistant Town Manager, if that's the model that's used. Because they wouldn't, you wouldn't necessarily be in a room this size that's filled with people. You might be, the town, the Assistant Town Manager might be in a smaller room with fewer people, so that more attention, more in-depth resolution of issues, and that that sort of customer service, it, well, might improve customer service for the taxpayer. And if the departments, if the department heads are, make suggestions to make their departments move more efficiently, you know, I think there's a possible benefit trickle-down effect to the taxpayer.
I think your comments are well said and well-made, Selectmen Rand. Really, in terms of customers, we have both internal and external customers. Our internal customers, our own fellow colleagues in departments that we want to serve more efficiently and lead by example. But in doing so, and sharing efficiencies, and reaching across departments, we do a better job of serving ultimately- we do a better job of serving ultimately our external customers, all the residents and businesses here in Falmouth. So you're quite correct, that's a model to do both of those and really internalize it. And it has plenty of upside, but in terms of any significant changes and attendant downside, really, as you see reflected in the structure in the Commonwealth, is becoming increasingly common and for good reason, that it enhances service at the end of the day and generally institutionalizes a manner to do it more cost effectively.
Open up to the public. Yep, ma'am.
Hi, Karen Hill, Precinct Two. I'm not really sure I understand the objective of this. Is this a way to take a job that someone's doing and kind of disperse it? And if a department head needs to talk to someone, can they talk to the assistant town manager? Does it, do they have the, does he or she have the authority to then give the answer? Or does it have to then go up and be answered by the town manager?
I think it'll be sometimes yes and sometimes, sometimes the assistant town manager will have the authority and sometimes they'll have to come back to the Board of Selectmen.
So does it make it more efficient to have to do that step in the middle? Do you understand what I'm saying? If I, if I go into a store and I have a complaint or whatever, and I go to the manager, that's the final word. If I have to go to the clerk, then to the assistant manager, it just takes more time?
Right, and I'm saying what, the current system is they go to the town manager. And the town manager could answer it or bring it to us. This system would be they go to the assistant town manager who could answer it or bring it to us.
Or go to the manager or just directly to you?
No, right.
And I think maybe in that scenario, a better example of what is being proposed, whether, whether we ultimately support it or not, is that it would be if you're in a department store, you know, the sporting department is talking to children's department, you know, they're all kind of bringing together the different departments within the store. And then those individuals are connecting with that assistant manager. So I think it's not as much who folks are reporting to, because regularly, the decision-making process will be what it is. It may be something that's answered at the assistant town manager, town manager level.
So what it is, is the manager then kind of doesn't have to deal with it? Is that pretty much what it is or?
No, I don't think so. I think as we're hearing it tonight, and please, Mr. Suso, correct me if I'm wrong, it's connecting the different departments together more, in a more formal way than we have now.
Well, as I listen more, maybe I'll get it.
And I think to follow Mrs. Englishbrogga's analogy about the department store, it would be the sporting goods person would get in touch with them and say, I don't have a worker today. And the manager could say, oh, well, maybe we can get in touch with someone in the children's store department and they could assist you in that because they are related enough, they could fill it. And it would just be one person who would be able to know the needs of the different groups and say, oh, there's a way we could work together.
If I go to buy clothing at K-Leans, I don't want somebody from Olympia helping me, you know? I don't know, maybe I'm just not getting it, but okay.
I'm maybe weighing on where I think this is of value. I've been a manager, program manager, project manager, so I've served in that capacity. And it always requires collaboration, bringing people together and sharing ideas and solving problems by pulling all the resources together and trying to get the best of everybody's eyes, ideas. And it seems to me that if you're only meeting with department heads every two months, that's not very responsive. If you can meet on a smaller level with people who have kind of common responsibilities, you give them the opportunity to share with each other how to approach various challenges that any department head might have in a, in a related kind of way. So I see this as essentially a way of providing more responsive town government and the opportunity for the department heads to think about how they can be, provide better quality to the citizens of this town. And to me, that's the real goal, is to provide better quality without driving costs up. Now, so far, I haven't seen any reason to drive costs up, but I do see opportunities for a more responsive and more quality-oriented organization. So that's kind of my take right now.
Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth Abrams. I'm chair of the Falmouth Public Library Board of Trustees. And I'm also speaking as an elected representative of the Falmouth Public Library Board. I understand you want to streamline the interaction between certain town departments. And in all due respect, we cannot support this proposal as it relates to the Falmouth Public Library Board of Trustees or the Falmouth Public Library. The proposal conflicts with Massachusetts general law. It also violates the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, as I see it, I'm not a lawyer. We agree that collaboration is desirable and that is why we already consult and cooperate with other town departments whenever feasible. In fact, we just finished a five-year strategic plan for the library, which clearly states our commitment to work with other town boards and local organizations for the benefit of the citizens of Falmouth. We already do this pretty well. The Falmouth Public Library and its trustees are governed by, this is going to be a lot of legalese, Mass. General Law's Chapter Seventy-Eight, Section Eleven. The statute sets out the trustees' duties, responsibilities, and sphere of governance. We are an elected board. Some of these other boards that were on the previous slide, well, actually, all of them are appointed. Our charge emanates from the state and is totally different from the charges to the other boards listed in the Community Services Department proposal. The other boards listed for inclusion in this Community Services Department are appointed entities charged with advising the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Trustees is charged with the responsibility for the oversight and the management of the library. We operate under state statutory and regulatory requirements as well as the letter and intent of, again, Chapter Seventy-Eight, Section Eleven. Oversight of the library requires a depth of knowledge and a level of specialized experience to ensure continued state certification and compliance with the American Library Association's Bill of Rights, Bill of Rights and Code of Ethics. We also have to answer to the state. We get funding from the state and in order to get that funding, we have to be certified, which means we have to be open a certain number of hours and that kind of thing. So it's not just one entity that we're responsible to. All right, under the Massachusetts General Law's, again, Chapter Seventy-Eight, the part that deals specifically with libraries, Section Eleven, the powers and duties of trustees, and it's on this, you can follow along in here. The board shall have the custody and management of the library and reading room and of all property owned by the town relating thereto. Under the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, Article Four, which covers other elected town boards and officers, Section C four, the general provisions, governmental bodies established or continued under this article shall perform their functions and duties in accordance with the Constitution. General law, again, this charter, bylaws, and votes of the representative town meeting. I do believe that if push comes to shove, general law supersedes town law. Under the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, again, same Article Four, other elected town boards, Section C four-five, Board of Library Trustees. The board shall be responsible for the administration and operation of the town library, including the appointment of a library director and other staff, acquisitions and promulgation of library rules and regulations. If you refer to the Falmouth Home Rule Charter Organization chart, it's that flow chart in the back here. And I'm sorry, I didn't make slides, I didn't think of it. It gives a thumbnail view of how the hierarchy of the town is organized. These boards across here are all elected, not appointed. Changing the structure, to me, appears to be a unilateral change to the Home Rule Charter. And as such, I think that would require other actions to take place, Charter Review Committee? I don't, I'm not totally sure. But it does show that the library trustees, like all the other elected town boards, stand apart and co-equal with the other elected boards. So again, we are an independent elected board. Our sole governance of the library is clearly mandated by the state. As an elected board, we have certain rights and powers. Other town boards, which are appointed by the selectmen, may recommend policies to the Board of Selectmen. This is detailed under the Home Rule Charter. Article Seven, appointed town boards. We are not appointed and we do not make recommendations, we make policy. We are a regulatory and statutory board. So the library is considered by many to be the crown jewel in Falmouth in no small part because of the training and education of the staff. More than twenty-five percent of the staff, there's forty staff members, roughly nine or ten of them have master's degrees in library science. And those that don't have had the requisite training necessary to provide superior service to the children, teens, and adults of this community. And again, with all due respect, adding a level of bureaucracy, to my mind, would detract from the level of service that we provided the community.
This is a question I also raised, asked Mr. Suso, because having been a library trustee, I was aware of these issues.
Yeah.
And my understanding is this is not going to be an oversight of the library because there's no way that assistant town manager, the town manager, or the Board of Selectmen can do that for all the reasons you mentioned. It is just a way of opening up another door of communication. That there are times that the Recreation Department or the Beaches or the Library are discussing the same topic. And to have them in the same room discussing the topic, there's no way that can be a harm because the library cannot be told what to do by anybody else, by the library Board of Trustees. And that's very clear. But to have them involved in the room when a communication, when a conversation occurs about some things that are going on in town, I can't see how that can hurt.
Is there a problem now, though, with it? It seems to me that we communicate pretty well. I mean, I communicate with you guys pretty well when I need to.
On issues that would be coming before the Board of Selectmen, this would be something I would see on a more day-to-day basis than on large issues for policy. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I would just say, I don't, I think one of the things that we heard when we were doing some of the programming committee work is that people who move here or have summered here and come here, we're generally, obviously, we were in that work focusing on seniors. But something that we kept hearing from individuals was that, you know, they're being told that so many things go on in town, right, and that they just didn't have a place or a way to sort of feel like that was connected or easily accessible. And so I think part of the idea of this, again, is not, I don't think anyone is saying that any one of these departments isn't doing a good job or doesn't try to communicate. But just fostering that and building on that, however we end up doing it, in a way that benefits all of our citizens. And so, you know, perhaps it is something about coordinating activities or things that are going on so that people know about it. You know, there are certain people that probably come to the library regularly and can tell us everything that's going on in that month. And then there are certain people who go to the rec center regularly and can do the same thing there. And so if there's a connection or more of a connectedness between those departments, again, maybe however we foster that, I think is, is the goal of this. So not, not indicating that anyone's not doing a good job or isn't communicating, but.
Right, right.
Services for the public and for the consumer is, is what it's really about.
But what exactly are you talking about when you talk about communicating or sharing? When you talk about sharing administration and staff, that makes me a little nervous. What staff are you talking about? Are you talking about sharing librarians? Are you talking about sharing the administrative assistant? Are you talking about sharing Leslie and Linda? I mean, I'm sorry, I just don't, I don't, I'm confused.
It may be just sharing information. It may be that the senior centers say, hey, we're doing this program on how to use a Dewey Decimal System. So are we, say, well, isn't it great, we're in the same room, let's schedule in different months and we don't duplicate. It's just that there are overlaps in the services that are being provided by the library and some of these others. And it's a way of getting that communication going.
So, I mean, again, I'm not an expert in any of this. Do you just want to have meetings more often? Do you want to have, do you want to free up Julian's time? Do you want to free up your time?
Right now, we do, as Julian said, the meeting occurs every two months with the rumful. And it's not with us. And he's suggesting is maybe instead, every two weeks or three weeks, six people are meeting with one person because their issues are so closely related and they're discussing what's going on within their each purview.
So why do you need to create a whole other umbrella organization then? Why not just have the meeting? Again, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, I'm just, you know, I just want to know.
This is what we're looking into is to, and I think it's something that has been evolving. And I think at one point, it may have been, we were looking to hire someone. I think Mr. Suso has found a way saying, you know, actually, there's a way within our given structure that we may be able to do it. And it may be he can just say, actually, I'm just going to appoint this assistant town manager and make it their job. But we're trying to get the input from people saying, what do you guys think? And it sounds like people are leery, but then say, oh, we like the sense of it.
Well, more communication is always better, but more bureaucracy is not always better.
I don't think we're trying to get more bureaucracy.
Yeah, I'm puzzled about this bureaucracy. What, what, what position are you talking about being created? There are four, four or five examples up there where a library is part of a community services department. And all those entities in the Commonwealth are governed by the same statute to which you've just referred.
The Yarmouth one, I know that library is appointed. That may make a difference, whether it's appointed or elected.
Happy to explore that.
Hello, my name is Alex Is. I'm a member of the Human Services Committee. And I very much appreciate the work that Karen does as the chair of it and also the work that all the members do. The only concern that I have here, as I look at this list, is almost, there are about eight different services that have to relate to seniors or councils of aging. And there's almost one that's a human services organization. That's the Human Services Department that I'm a member of. But everything else, all the others seem to be filled with councils of aging, senior centers. It just seems to me an overwhelming use of the senior centers' resources. And not to be concerned, there's only one other that has a Human Services Committee and that's in Natick. But it just seems to me that there's something is missing here. If, if, if the entire list of agencies here are dominated by senior, senior organizations or councils of aging.
Michael Healan, Cliffwood Lane. I will keep this very brief. According to the Town Charter, which I'm assuming was in place when Mr. Suso got his job, Section five dash three A, the town manager shall be responsible for administering and coordinating all employees' activities in departments placed by general law. So this is basically superseding, no, this is just adding a new position? But shouldn't he, but this, he should be responsible for administrating and coordinating all employees and activities?
It's just delegating responsibility.
He is ultimately, it doesn't change that ultimate responsibility. It's just creating a, you know, a contact or, again, it's, it's, you know, creating, hopefully, a more efficient.
I don't understand the extra person being efficient. Because this is like a game of telephone, by the time it gets to him, he's missed. Why can't he have weekly meetings with the department heads? That's what you want to do with the assistant town manager, have weekly department head meetings? But we have someone right now at this table who should be doing that, I would assume. I don't, I don't understand why we would have someone who is being paid less money and less qualified doing this when we have someone who should be more qualified, being paid more money.
Let me just see if I can address your question. Because I don't think people appreciate just how busy the town manager's office is. How many issues are constantly being dealt with over and over and over and over again? Which basically means that when you try to get in touch with somebody, there's going to be a delay. When you delegate sort of a supervisory role to somebody for a limited portion of the departments, you're more likely going to be able to get their attention and raise the issue that you need some, need addressing. And so I think that's how I see this, is potentially being of value to improve the services of the town. The town manager, I can tell you, we're going to hold him responsible. That's not going away at all. And if this doesn't work, obviously, we're going to hold him responsible for the fact that he's created an organizational structure that's really not helping this, improve the services of the town. I mean, that doesn't change. So I, I think your point is not quite on target of what the potential benefit is of clustering town departments under like the assistant town manager and making that person specifically responsible for, for being more receptive and for collaborating among that group of departments.
But you could leave it the structure the way it is now and then you could have Mr. Suso charge the assistant town manager with taking care of situations.
You just bring it to us for discussion. We, I don't think it's something we actually would even need to vote. And I think it's something he could do without our permission. But I think he felt it's something worthwhile to have a discussion both with us and with the committees.
And this is not a new position, just giving assistant town manager new responsibilities?
Or, or more defined and limited responsibilities?
Ms. Connolly?
Ms. Connolly.
Hi, I'm Annie Connolly, and I'm the executive director for the Housing Trust, Falmouth Housing Trust, but I'm also a member of the Human Services Committee. But I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea. I actually, having conducted business with the town of Falmouth, I think that it would be helpful if certain functions were designated to certain senior staff. I think it's often, you know, Mr. Suso shouldn't have to get every single email or request. He is very busy and does a good job, but it's a lot, it's a tremendous volume of work and correspondence. And so besides you folks at the library, you know, sound, you're on your own little schick, I don't think it's a bad idea, and I don't think it's creating more work or more bureaucracy, and I think it's, I think it may be being made a bigger deal than it really is, but maybe I'm wrong. So.
Thank you, keep talking.
Hi, Brenda Swain. I've served on Human Services Committee, and I'm currently on the Council on Aging. I just have a couple of quick questions. Mr. Suso, you've mentioned a couple times, cost savings are more economical, and I'm just wondering if you had any other specific examples of what you're thinking about along those lines, besides possibly if somebody is out sick or on an extended leave?
Well, the fact that there is another person in the town manager's office that would be a direct contact, and has authority to act immediately, is an economy of effort and a dollar savings in time and in support for the various departments we're talking about. So that's, that's an extraordinary example that I have personally witnessed, and I think has great potential.
Okay. And I, lastly, I just wondered, why you put the assistant town manager in charge of these departments, which interface with people a lot, versus like the DPW and other departments that interface with roads and things? I'm just wondering why you chose that?
Well, if you'd like to propose another model, you're welcome to do so. I think that's one of the reasons that you're invited to be here.
First of all, Mr. Jones, tonight Andy Dufresne brought up a very good point on chapter 115. As a member of the Veterans Council, I don't have any right to know who the recipients are getting services in that area. So therefore, if you had to send somebody in, so to speak, to supplement the operation down there, they couldn't look at the records. So, I mean, it kind of puts it out. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, this community service operation came about, I believe, under chapter 40S, under the Smart Growth System, where they would give you money to educate the children through these operations. And I checked a couple places.
Could I just interject?
Yes.
This initiative has nothing to do with that.
Okay, good.
Just want to clarify.
That's on record, that's all I'm looking for now, to get things on record. But I checked with the town of Bonsville, they have a director, Lynn Poyant, who is their director up there, and there's another director up in Natick. And in the Natick one, the only thing that I saw there was the fact that they have a nice organic garden, community garden that they put together. That was the big thing with this community service operation. I personally think that you've got a good idea, maybe, to do this, but what I would say to you, hopefully, the words aren't taken out of context, because I don't mean them to be demeaning words, but I think the inference is almost to the point that the department heads aren't doing their jobs. So you need somebody to, you know, look over and kind of direct them. I would honestly say that I, in my experience with the department heads, we've been very cooperative in everything we've done. We've sent people to the health, I mean, to the human services, we've sent people down to the other services that they need. I mean, this is, it goes on all the time. The biggest problem I have with this is, is it going to really help us out? Now, quite a while ago, many years ago, I suggested that you've got 30 department heads in the town. If you took 10 and split it into threes, that would be three hours a month that you would have to sit with those 10 people in A, B, and C group, and talk to them about the problems that they have, or what's going on, and so on, so forth. In other words, like in the military, it's called a stand-up, where the commander gets the information as to what's going down, and then gives the order, okay, do this and do that. Three hours a month? I, you know, I know you're a busy guy, but I think three hours a month would work, and you're only going to deal with 10 people. You know, A group comes in, and then next week it's B group, and then C group. Three hours a month. And I think it would save a lot of problems, and I really don't believe that we need somebody to fill that maybe $140,000 a year job. Because then he's going to have to have secretaries. I know what you're thinking, but it's going to happen.
We're not proposing the creation of any new positions.
Again, it's on record, that's all I'm looking for.
It's on the slide. Assistant town manager would have that authority.
If I may, I mean, I think, and I can't speak for Mr. Suso, but I know the way that, you know, I look at this, is that, I guess I look at it from the other direction, which is that sometimes what you hear from department heads is that they're reaching out, trying to get answers, and because of the volume of the requests and the things that are going on, the answers aren't always coming as quickly as needed, or the follow-up is maybe delayed slightly. I think this helps us to really have an accountability in place, some accountability in place, that, you know, the individual that these department heads go to in these particular services, whatever services end up being in this, you know, grouping, go to that assistant town manager, a position we already are looking to fill, again, not a new position, and that that's their go-to person, and that that person needs to respond to them, and needs to kind of initiate whatever, however often these meetings happen. But that's the job, it's really tasking, not necessarily department heads with anything new, it's tasking the assistant town manager with a new responsibility, that I think, again, hopefully, just makes up the connections. A lot of the connections are there, maybe it makes them more, maybe it makes them easier, and it gives the department heads, I think, somebody that they say, you know, this is who I go to first for whatever these issues are. So I see it as, hopefully, making things run more smoothly for department heads, and again, ultimately, that, I believe, trickles down to services for our citizens and our visitors.
Because I see this person as being able to give the department heads a lot more support.
Yes.
Than needing to criticize that they're not doing their job. And it's certainly not where it's coming from. It's coming from, how can we support these department heads more directly? Mr. Patterson? I'd like to throw another perspective in, again, coming from a manager's experience, and that's the value of performance evaluations. If you've got 30 people you've got to conduct performance evaluations on, and I'm talking about the constructive kind, where you sit down on an annual basis, and you set out some objectives that you mutually agree on, that are going to basically improve the quality of the department, what have you. If the town manager has to go through 30 department heads, that's going to be a pretty trivial kind of interaction, if you will. And it needs to be more frequent. I see this as a way of clustering together a group of department heads, who will then be evaluated by an assistant town manager, who will do that collaborative process of tracking, of suggesting performance, talking about it collaboratively, setting objectives, and then reviewing those objectives. And no plan ever goes perfectly, we all know that, so there's all kinds of extenuating circumstances as to why objectives don't get met. I've been through many, many, and it's one of those things where you sit together and say, yeah, that, you could not have gotten that done. This came in, it had to be addressed, it was more important, it had the higher priority. But that process is an important process between a supervisor, or anybody, that their constituent that they're working with. And I see this as a way of facilitating a better performance evaluation process at the supervisory level.
And we understand that cannot apply to the library.
Yeah, the library is, clearly, I agree, that's a separate organization. Yeah, I think that, that argument's been made very clearly.
What, Dan Sherritt? I think the general public, including myself, looked at this as we were going to hire another man to run five or six departments. And that's not true. But I think, in some of these, and I'm going to, would pick the one that I'm most interested in, the beach committee, which would be great to have someone to go to, but we have a whole group of people we have to work with all the time. So I think this is out of place. We've got to work with the DP, or W, we should be in that meeting. We've got to, and I don't understand, now, we're going to have a meeting with, the department head is going to have a meeting with this group, but not the one we have to work with, and that I don't understand. I think the idea overall is very good. Thank you.
Philip Fonzo. So I legitimately am a truck driver. I don't do these meetings very often and very well, so excuse me for being blunt, and please don't take any disrespect. But from what I gather, by looking at the board and hearing people speak, is that there's a lack of accountability. And Mr. Suso, I apologize, but if you're not doing your job, I'd expect you to be fired. And if department heads aren't doing their job, I expect them to be gone. They are receiving taxpayer money to provide services to myself, to my family, to my neighbors, to the seniors, to the veterans, so on and so forth. I see this as a babysitter. I see this as if you're going to have an assistant town manager, for example, where you're as busy as you are, wouldn't it be better for you to have your assistant be your assistant to work with you? Versus having to deal with, you know, this one bickering with this one, this one not talking to that one. They have an extra truck over here, and they need a truck over here, but they're not communicating to get that vehicle from beaches, sorry, to the rec department, let's say. I'm not really totally understanding, I don't really think many people are, of what direction this is going here, but...
Let me explain, this is not a reaction to things not going well. This is not a reaction that department heads are doing a poor job. This is a town coming from a place of strength, and every place can do a better job. And we're very proud of the way our department heads work, and the way these organizations work, but we think we can do better. And we think this is a way of getting these committees to do an even better job of working collaboratively, of communicating with each other. They do it.
You mean department?
The departments, sorry, the departments. We think they can do a better job with some help, and we're trying to provide the support system for them to be able to get the help to do an even better job, because we're proud of what they do. And it is not coming from a department head, any department head, that we think we're going to be firing. So I'm really, really, very concerned about you suggesting that that's where we're coming from, because it's not.
It's not made crystal clear, but I will say, when we're on a committee, we are a non-paid town employee. You guys get, what, $3,000 to sit behind the desk? I mean, you're volunteers essentially, too, it pays for your gas. We take an ethics quiz, right? So, on the town website. Maybe there could be a form of, I know with the Upper Cape Spartans, for example, they follow the CAL program, Character, Academics, and Leadership. If you were to seek out some sort of motivation, sort of program, that all department heads were to go through, I don't, it's not clear. Like, I see this, I see where you're going, but...
Yeah, I don't, you know, again, I know we're just sort of, we're just kind of looking at this, an introductory view, and hearing back from people, so I don't want, I think Chairman Jones said it very well, just now, but I think the idea is, you know, sometimes, sometimes, you know, what we hear all the time is, we're not trying, we're not trying new things, we're stuck, and now, you know, we're bringing something new, just to get feedback. And again, not, nobody's saying department heads aren't doing their job, or else those individuals wouldn't have their jobs anymore. That is not what's going on. It's the idea, and again, I guess I'm coming at it from the perspective of, department heads need a go-to person that they get a quick response from. And also, I think what would be helpful is having someone who helps bring departments, that's their job. It's not that, you know, department head's job is not to, it would be wonderful if they had the time, but to reach out to all the other departments, or other related departments. It would be nice if there were a position, and the assistant town manager could do that, that their job is to facilitate and foster that connection and that communication, and build on what's already happening. So I think it's, you know, we're trying to improve services, improve communication, and I think that's all this, that's the only place this is coming from. Not a critique of any current department heads, and not any sort of, you know, I don't even know the words, my daughter had me up at 2:30, so, not any kind of, you know, allegation that communication isn't happening, or that there's so much infighting that services are stymied. That's not it. But we can provide better services, and I think the taxpayer always deserves the very best that we can give them. And that's all that I think that this is, you know, offering.
Sorry, I'm still just trying to figure this out. And reading it, listening to everyone, is basically, what this is, is you're not hiring a new position, but you are adding responsibility to the position that you have. Now, how does that affect what this new person coming in is going to ask for salary? Because whatever the salary was that the last person had, if you're adding new responsibility, are they going to be able to say, well, I should get this much more money because I'm doing this much more work? That's just...
As opposed to, I'm not sure I use the addition verb as much as we are making this a part of the assistant town manager's position.
I understand, but if, I go for a job...
Right now, it's not necessarily defined as to what that position is.
I understand. So it's, you're saying they're going to take things away from what was necessarily...
The new assistant town manager will not be doing the same job as the past town assistant town manager.
They'll be doing a different job.
There'll be some different responsibilities.
So they'll take some things away and add some things, or they'll just add things?
I think they'll take some things away and add some things.
So the things they take away will be done by whom?
As we define what, exactly what the assistant town manager's going to be...
Yeah, it's really very unclear.
The job is already posted.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we're not, you know, going to hire someone, and then, you know, they're going to negotiate, I mean, that's, they're...
No, but this hasn't, this isn't passed yet, or has it?
I don't even think it would have to pass. Again, I think that the town manager has it within his purview to set something up like this.
Say this is the...
I think he's reaching out, again, to really get feedback, which is incredibly helpful, and also to, you know, just have that public information out there.
For transparency?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
One more thing? I come out of the private business world as an engineer and engineering manager, and I could tell you that the goal was always continuous improvement. And it was something we took very seriously. We're always evaluating how we conducted our business, and how we could deliver better services or better products to our customers. I think this is what this is all about. It's really raising the question, is there a way that we can run our town a little bit more effectively, with a little bit better quality services as a result of it? Is it cast in concrete? No. And it's really, it's an attitude and an approach, and something that I, as a school committee member, actually got put into the schools, the school department's mission statement, is that striving for continuous improvement. It becomes a professional attitude that you take, and that you try to promulgate down to all your department heads, and to every employee. Everybody's responsible for improving the quality of the services for the customers that they serve. And I think that's what's happening here, is looking for ways that we can improve the efficiency of the communication, and see if we can actually improve the quality of services to the town. That's certainly the attitude I have as a selectman. So if this doesn't work, we'll try something else. But I think, it's not a criticism, I have great respect for the employees and the department heads of this town, but to give up that opportunity to try to figure out if there's a better way to do business, well, that's something we shouldn't give up. We should always be striving for that.
Mr. Porter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Otis Porter, I'm vice chairman of the Board of Public Library Trustees, and I agree whole heartedly with Mr. Jones's statement that the library director should not be included in any evaluation. However, more to the point, was Mr. Jones's remarks about a week or two ago, where he questioned whether the library should even be in the mix at all. We're entitled under chapter 78, as Chairman Abrams said, to do the management. We're entitled under Chapter 78, as Chairman Abrams said, to do the management of the library. This means would the library director be serving two masters here? That's a thought for the board to consider.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one question?
There are other library people who want to speak also, so I want to give them a chance too.
There are other town departments that you want to have under the community services thing too, right? I mean, not, you know, different committees. Would they be also answering to the town Assistant Town Manager?
Say the question again.
This is a group of, I don't know, one, two, three, four, five, five, six, five without the library, who would be talking with the Assistant Town Manager. The oversight would be Assistant Town Manager. What about the other departments in town?
It's exactly as listed on that table.
Okay, I'm sorry, there's no other, what about the DPW or-
And it's to the Town Manager.
Okay, okay, so they'd be under you. So you're just delegating, I mean, essentially, this is what I'm-
I think that was mentioned earlier, yes.
Yeah, well-
That's part of it.
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
Good evening, I'm Sylvia Shulkin, and I'm one of the library trustees, and I have no quarrel with giving the Assistant Town Manager additional or new tasks, but you're creating a new department. You're not just creating new tasks, and that's what concerns me. I share Mr. Mustafa's skepticism about what will happen once a new department is in place. A new department has new needs, perhaps, an administrative assistant, and who knows where it will go from there. So I don't see the necessity for creating a community service department. Thank you.
Mr. Dine?
Bill Dine in Precinct 5, definitely a learning experience here. I come from a management background, I've been in management for almost forty years, and the sign of a good manager is the ability to delegate but control. I think that's the town manager's trying to do here. I think the couple key words that scared some people here tonight was oversight rule. That was definitely a trigger point for some of the departments that are here tonight. I think if we can get over that, you already have Home and Petition Affairs how to handle this, you can delegate it now without even having this meeting, if you wanted to do it. And I know you have a new person coming aboard, that you want to assign new duties or additional duties to relieve some of your tasks, but I think that's the big scare point. No one's trying to take control of departments. That's what I get from this meeting, and the key was, you said, no additional funds, no new position. That's key. If you're going to get better, work smarter, that's the way to go. So I give you kudos as far as that goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fineran?
I think some of the trepidation people have here is because, you know, the last meeting, you kind of, for want of a better term, you sprung three new positions on us. And I think the questions that are, the way you're answering these questions tonight doesn't necessarily apply to the other positions, because I certainly have something to say about one of them. But maybe you could make people a little more comfortable just by citing a few examples in the last couple of months where this would have helped, and in individual cases, or streamlined something, or where there was a problem where, you know, it illustrates where this is necessary.
Merrill and Zachs, Precinct 6, Library Trustee. When I saw this proposal, I was not thinking at all of it in terms of administrative complexities. I took a very much more Pollyanna view, and I thought, well, how nice it would be if those bodies in town that do present service could get together and say, "How can we help each other?" And my response is, someone intimately involved in the library was, "We do this anyway." Just to simplify the whole thing, why not get together and say with these entities, "What can we do to help each other during the year?" I saw this as storytime at the beaches, which may be a very fundamental way of looking at it. I saw this of, what else can we do that we already do pretty well for senior or disabled book delivery? And rather than another layer of bureaucracy, why not get the human service components of the town to meet once a year or twice a year and say, "We've got a proposal, can you help us with it?" And do it from a service point of view rather than a bureaucratic point of view. That may be very naive, but it may be just as productive.
I think you've articulated exactly, better than any of us, what the whole purpose of this is, and that's why you're not creating a new department, and you're not creating a new position. We're charging the Assistant Town Manager with facilitating exactly what you just said. And you articulated well the fact that that plays out in improved or new or diverse services for our citizens. So, thank you, because you just distilled all of that, I think, in a better way.
What I'm talking about is an advisory group in terms of, what can we do better? And what are we already doing in our service that could be done better? Without the threat of who's in charge here. And we need to protect our rights and privileges, which is how the library responded to this.
Let me put one last point, I want to, Mr. Jones, but it was brought up- And I'm naive to this, but it was brought up that these committees would meet with the Assistant Town Manager.
Not committees.
The department heads, yes.
That was set up as a possibility.
That's fine, yeah. Now, when it comes down to raises, et cetera, merit raises and whatnot, that would be something that the town manager would determine, because-
That's still under his purview, yes.
Under his purview, okay. So if I am the department head-
Actually, a lot of them are set by contract, but-
But just for, funny, if I'm the department head of the Beach Committee, and I meet with the Assistant Town Manager for a year, then it's my time for my annual review, and I'm meeting with someone who I don't meet with on a regular basis, that becomes a slight issue, doesn't it?
I think it's the way a lot of businesses work, I mean, that's, you know, the person I direct, I respond to directly is not necessarily the one who's going to determine my salary at a higher level. All right, thank you very much for your contributions. We do have the individual selectance report to go through, so either if you would leave very quietly as we're doing our reports, or sit there for five more minutes, individual selectance reports.
No, thank you, I'll pass this week.
Oh, okay.
And Mr. Patterson?
Well, I'm going to jump in, yeah, there's some important things. First of all, the road race, I got to go to the expo and the race itself, is truly a magnificent thing. It's extremely well organized, the almost 2,000 volunteers that come out from the town really make a huge difference in pulling it off, because it takes that kind of turnout of people. I mean, it is truly a testament to Falmouth that we can do something like this, and it's really put us on the map. This is the fourth, was the fortieth running of the road race this year, and I have to say, I was there, and it's magnificent to watch it, and it is such a celebration, that American flag hanging over the finish line and all. It's something we can be truly proud of, and I just want to reach out to thanks all the volunteers, but I also wanted to thank the town staff, Fire Department, the Police Department, the Beach Committee, the DPW, there's a huge number, the Health Department, Building Department, all of them put out the extra effort to help make this happen and keep it safe, and it was exactly that. So I just wanted to point that out, I was there and witnessed it all.
I did talk to Chief Dunn about it, he said, "There were no big issues, but he didn't get any sleep." And that's the kind of dedication we got from the town employees, saying, "Yep, I'm going to do what it takes to make this thing work." It's exhausting, it's a big job, but they take it on.
And none of the police I know, for a fact, are allowed to take off this weekend. They have to be available to serve duty, and we really appreciate all that extra effort. Really want to do a shout-out to them. Doug and Manager Suso and I went to the Country Club this past week, and just saw the renovations that have been made to the clubhouse. It was actually my first time going there to the clubhouse, since I don't play golf. And what a great facility that is for the town, it's taken a huge amount of property out of development, and represents a really nice, relatively passive recreation in East Falmouth, which is always complaining that they're not getting those conservation areas put in, and there is a significant part of that whole golf course complex that is under conservation restriction.
I have a complaint about the bunker in the fifth hole, though. I played the nine holes afterwards, and it took me three strokes to get out of there.
And the irrigation system is going to be going in next, and that's an ongoing project that will roll out over time. So there's been some great improvements, and I do want to mention, I was very impressed with the fact that the greens fees are kept so low, and it really is offered as a family course that's really a service to Falmouth residents. It's not a professional course that's requiring big greens fees, so it's a great asset to the town, and gives a lot of opportunity for people to go and exercise and enjoy a nice, fresh air out, you know, outside. Another thing that I went to was a CPC meeting, really appreciate their support for creating the Housing Coordinator position, this is going to come up before town meeting, but I know Sandy was there. They have chosen to actually fund three years of a housing coordinator position through CPC funds that are actually given through the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Really appreciate that support, because I think coordination of all of these housing projects and issues, keeping things on that subsidized housing inventory list and what have you, really requires a lot of extra responsibility. So this is not going to come out of the town budget, it's going to become as a result of fulfilling one of the four areas of concern of the CPC, which is housing. So really appreciate their support. All of this has to go before town meeting and get approval for that to happen, but at least this is an opportunity for us to add a little bit more staff in an area that's been begging for attention and follow-up on a regular basis, and also providing a communication link between the town departments and the developers, because it's the only way we get projects done, is that those private-public partnerships, is the developers are always private individuals, so they got to get through all those wickets of permitting and going before boards for approval, and this person is going to be in a position to help facilitate that, to make it a bit more efficient and less prohibitive for developers. That's part of it. One other thing I'll say really quickly is, I have enjoyed the last week going around through Falmouth, taking pictures to provide to the company, this Woods Hole Group that's doing the Falmouth Hazard Mitigation Plan. They're working on a pretty tight budget, so I basically said, "You know, I'm going to go out and take some pictures for you, and you can pick and choose from the pictures," and Peter McConner, he came up with a whole folder full of pictures from damage from Tropical Storm Sandy, and so they got about seventy-five pictures now that they can pull from to put into that report, to try to make it a little bit more Falmouth-specific, instead of just a boilerplate description of any old, of these, any old town's hazard mitigation plans. But it was kind of fun, and it's, it was an excuse for me to get out, see the town, and take some pictures and snapshots, and then pass those along, so that's my report.
Thank you.
Pass.
Okay. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It was my pleasure to attend the meetings that have already been referred to on a couple different occasions, both involving the School Department, also with the CPC, and very pleased to have all the initiatives moving forward that were involved in. I also want to thank members of the board for hosting the very lively discussion, which was, we just entertained, regarding a potential Community Services Department, a lot of great comments, a lot of good dialogue, and good food for thought moving forward, so appreciate that very much, and the opportunity to have that kind of a forum, and for the board to host it. And that concludes my report.
Any other business?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes.